All right, good morning. If you'll calm down in the back there, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the May fourteenth meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors. We begin this morning as we do every morning with a flag salute, this time led by Supervisor Gore.
(inaudible)
Okay, consent. I understand we have an item that we need to fix.
Yes, Supervisors, I have two items. One is Item fourteen A. I'd recommend postponing to a future date and time.
Okay, so that's not the consent. That's just a regular?
Uh...
Department?
It's not a department item. Okay, sorry about that.
So let's go ahead and address the consent item.
Okay, seventeen A. We'd like to move that to just have clarity about.
Okay. Now, is that moved to be discussed this morning and clarified as opposed to removed entirely?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on consent? Any board members have anything else on consent? Any members of the public have any item that's currently on consent that they would like removed for discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the remaining consent items? We have a motion. Holmes, second, Wiegand. A roll call, please.
Gore, Wiegand, Holmes, Gustafson, Euler.
Yes. Okay, and the item that was removed, seventeen A?
Yes. Just clarification. So the clerk will update on page four nineteen under the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency item. It lists Montgomery as the alternate that should be Gustafson.
All right. Sounds good to me. Do we have a motion to approve as amended? I'm gonna give the motion to Gustafson and the second to Wiegand. Was it Bonnie?
It was Bonnie.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, so Gore and the second to Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. And then Item seventeen, or fourteen, excuse me. Item fourteen, we'll go ahead and announce right now that Item fourteen A is gonna be continued to a future board meeting. The board's not gonna hear that item today.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And with that, we will jump back to public comment. This is a time when members of the public can address the board on anything that is not on our agenda this morning, knowing that board members cannot take action on items raised under public comment. However, that doesn't mean that your words fall on deaf ears. Frequently, comments made at public cause staff to spring into action while you're still speaking. So if you have something you want to raise under public comment, feel free to step forward and identify yourself and try to keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Nancy Jo Rixey. It's R-I-E-K-S-E, if some of you don't know who I am. I live currently on Lawrenson Road, just very close to the Trap Club up from the new green sound wall. I want to thank the people who came last, you know, a couple of weeks ago and talked about the noise level and the constant shooting that has been occurring at the Auburn Trap Club. They experienced what I had been for almost two years without any acknowledgement from the county regarding my concerns or my submittal of complaints. If the Auburn Trap Club had only stuck to their published and posted historical hours Saturday, Sunday, and Thursday, trap loads, and historic business practices, there would not have been a need for the green sound wall. I don't know Mr. Callison, I think it is, or Carlson, or something like that. Carlisle. And I wonder, after all the years he's lived up on that hill, and I think it's been fourteen, why he has put so much money into this sound wall and have to look at it, too. There seems to be some kind of cloak of secrecy between the county and the Auburn Trap Club, as well as a code of silence. No communication or facilitation has ever occurred before or during the decision-making process to build the sound wall. No consideration was given to the neighborhood that the green sound wall affected, or to anyone that brought issues with the intensified use at the Auburn Trap Club, except Mr. Carlisle. I understand that the Auburn Trap Club has been around a long time, but if the county and the Auburn Trap Club don't have a copy of their use, their conditional use permit, how does anyone know they are in compliance? It seems in the last few years, the Auburn Trap Club has changed from a member nonprofit to a for-profit, open-to-public commercial business. The commercial sound wall speaks to a commercial business running out of the ATC. They are receiving compensation by renting out the range, as well as selling ammunition and running firearms to the public. It is possible the Auburn Trap Club is protected from its published and posted historical shooting hours for members Saturday, Sunday, and Thursday, but not for the intensified public use of the range seven days a week, mostly during dinner and evening hours, or holding public events without permits more than ten times a year that generate over two hundred people driving down that road, starting at six-thirty in the morning and ending at five. These are people that come all at once. I'm almost done. I would like the Board of Supervisors to use their discretion and uphold the Auburn Trap Club conditional use permit based on the published and posted historical use. Members only Saturday, Sunday, and Thursday with no other use of the range during other days of the week or public events without permits. In closing, it is really bad that such a horrible green wall was put up in such a beautiful area of Auburn, when all that needed to happen was reasonable people to have a conversation, showing respect to constituents, neighbors, and surroundings. I am lucky I can't see the wall from my home, and I really can't tell the difference with the decibel level, especially on certain days, when they seem to be using different loads. I feel I'm living in a war zone with sniper shooting going on seven days a week, which isn't healthy for anyone, which many of our veterans and health practitioners can attest to. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Good morning. For those who don't know me yet, or have not read something I've written, Paula Berthonsen, resident and major campaigner for Forest Hill Fire District, Measure B. First, I'm grateful that Measure B passed with sixty-eight point three percent of the cast votes approving an increase of two-hundred-and-forty dollars per year to property, to properly fund our emergency and ambulance services. Almost sixty-three percent of the four thousand seventy-five registered voters cast. Astounding turnout for a single measure ballot special election. Engaging voters through community and fire board education sessions paid off. A big thanks to the Elections Office for aiding in my efforts by providing helpful statistics along the way. It takes a team to create a win. But I'm here today to also express my disappointment in your lack of action, and I promised all who voted to support Measure B that I would hold the county accountable for their spending. In April two thousand eighteen, I attended the Forest Hill Forum and addressed Supervisor Montgomery, who was then seated on the Placer County Board of Supervisors as our District Five representative on the use of one million five hundred thousand annually of general fund tax dollars to subsidize CAL FIRE contract services for seven failed fire zones of benefit within Placer County. My findings were affirmed at the forum meeting and at the May two thousand eighteen Placer County Board meeting, with a press release issued that the five-year gap for funding would reach nine point five million dollars. An ad hoc committee was formed with the intent to identify a means to correct this situation with only two supervisors, of which one has since vacated. It has been twelve months and no proposals put forward to rectify the injustice being done to all the communities of Roseville, Granite Bay, Loomis, Rockland, Forest Hill, Placer Hills, at all, that pay and manage their own fire EMS services but receive no funding or support from Placer. This situation is no longer tenable and is egregious. It is time for Placer County to share timely steps being taken to address and correct this unfair funding practice. Those failed zones need to vote a self-tax, as done by Forest Hill and Placer Hills, or the CAL FIRE contract needs trimming within what is funded by fire tax dollars in those communities. There is no more wait to see or negotiating. Forest Hill and Placer Hills did the right thing to solve their issues, and now Colfax and the other communities that make up the seven need to do the same or lose the extra service. I realize Placer County is in a quandary, since those zones of benefit expect Placer to remain status quo. I'd like to suggest you put the zones of benefit on notice, that a vote needs to be approved or face consequences. Until they feel the pain endured by Forest Hill residents, seeing staff and resources dwindle to bare bones, they are not gonna vote to pay more, since they get a free ride while the rest of us in Placer subsidize their zone of benefit. Misusing general fund tax dollars needs to cease for failed fire districts, as it diverts monies from other intended projects, and Placer County is not legally responsible for providing this service. This is a countywide issue, and it needs to be solved before the next budget approval. Thank you. Sorry, my allergies are really bad.
Sounds like it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Scott Johnson, one-five-two-one-five Bancroft Road, Auburn, nine-five-six-oh-two. I want to thank our new supervisor for stepping up and representing us in District Five, and wish her all the luck. I was able to speak with her briefly at the medalers' meeting this morning on the issue of the Sunset Area Plan and the draft environmental impact report that the county prepared at taxpayer expense. That report has over sixty significant impacts that can't be mitigated. Fortunately, the Alliance for Environmental Leadership, group of sixteen local organizations, was able to hire Master Planner Genevieve Marsh to prepare a citizen-initiated smart growth plan as an alternative. And my request to my supervisor is to work with all of her colleagues on the board supervisors here to open the public comment period on that plan, and consider the citizen-initiated smart growth plan as the preferred environmental alternative. Currently, no project is the preferred environmentally superior alternative, and I think the county is, would be wise to avail themselves of the opportunity to look at this new plan. Phase one was released during the public comment period. Phase two, which focuses specifically on jobs, housing mix, will be available in a few weeks. And the problem that I see with the plan is that it doesn't meet the current plan, doesn't meet the goals of either the Placer County General Plan, or the housing element for the General Plan, or the transportation elements. It doesn't meet the SACOG Sacramento Area Council of Governments' plan for creating, for instance, bus rapid transit density housing. It's, the current plan is too heavily weighed towards single-family, five-hundred thousand or more dollar homes, and the county has done a pretty good job. They're up to eighty percent of the SACOG recommended building of that type of housing, but for the other three housings, middle income, low income, and very low income, we're in single, low single digits in compliance with SACOG recommendations. So please consider reopening the public comment and using the citizen-initiated smart growth plan as the preferred environmental superior alternative.
Okay. Quick question, Mr. Johnson, if you have a moment. So I'm familiar that an alternative plan has been drafted. Has CEQA and NEPA analysis been done on that alternative plan?
Well, if the county...
No, by the citizens group that drafted the plan. If you've drafted the plan, as you know, our board can't consider a plan that doesn't have adequate CEQA and NEPA review.
That's, we're asking to reopen the review and use that plan.
So you're asking the county to re-initiate the environmental review process to incorporate your plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Mickey Donahue. I've been a resident in Placer County for over ten years, and I'm here to add to the comments and concerns from the last meeting, as well as this morning, about the Auburn Trap Club, as I live on Lawrenson Road, and I've been directly affected by the Auburn Trap Club before and after the wall being built. The sound wall is not the problem. The Trap Club and the county appears to be the problem. With the Auburn Trap Club shooting seven days a week, something had to be done. And I think that neighbor who spent over half a million dollars, from what I've heard of his own money, to install the wall because the county was basically negligent, wouldn't do anything after multiple complaints. The fact that the county let this be handled independently and privately, instead of resolving the situation, shows, in my opinion, the incompetence of the county. For years, formal complaints to the county have been ignored. You file a complaint with code enforcement, and they tell you it's a planning department issue. You go to planning department, and they tell you it's a code enforcement issue. You finally press the issue enough and receive a letter from a county member that also has personal ties to the Auburn Trap Club, stating basically that they can do what they want. I understand that the Auburn Trap Club has been around since the forties, but a lot has changed in Auburn since the forties. Houses and schools have been built, more members have joined the Trap Club, increasing their shooting and use of the range, again, shooting seven days a week. Did they shoot seven days a week back in the forties? The Auburn Trap Club claims on their website that they are open for business three days a week. Even on their monthly calendar, Google, every online resource, including multiple documents with the county, show that they are open for business three days a week, and that they shoot seven days a week. I would like to know how a shooting, a private shooting club can shoot for seven days a week. I would also like to point out and know why a winery has to pull a permit for every little event, but the Auburn Trap Club can host a competition, including barbecuing, beverages, and well over two hundred people, requiring a parking attendant, and cars parked partially blocking the road, and that they do not have to have a permit. When the Auburn Trap Club hosts an event, you can tell, not because excessive nonstop shooting, but because of the trash that is littered on the road, including a significant amount that is thrown or blown onto the Placer County Land Trust across the street from the Auburn Trap Club adjacent to Lawrenson Road. Dangerous driving also occurs when students and parents are leaving the Trap Club with adrenaline from shooting, driving excessive speed limits over the yellow line, and leaving in multiple packs of vehicles in and out at one particular time. I hear that the Auburn Trap Club does a lot for the community, but what do they do besides terrorize the community that they reside in? The Auburn Trap Club has been approached multiple times by different neighbors, attempting to resolve an issue with your neighbor the old-fashioned way, going over to your neighbor to discuss an issue, and we all received the same response, that they can shoot from eight AM to eight PM every day, and that we're lucky that they don't. This is unacceptable. The mindset that they have, that they can do whatever they want, and it is also unacceptable that the county allows them to maintain that mindset. This is not a case of people moving next to the airport and complaining about the airplanes. This is a case of living next to the airport and increasing flights from three days a week to seven days a week. Even with the new sound wall, my family can still hear all of the shots with all of our windows and our curtains closed, and the TV turned up very loud. We cannot go outside. We cannot have a birthday party. We cannot have dinner on our back patio in our backyard because there is shooting. We cannot live Monday through Friday, four to eight PM, Thursday, two to eight PM, Friday, four to eight PM, Saturday, nine to four, and Sunday, ten to three. There is no right to live. With the community outside of Lawrenson Road recently being affected off of Bell Road and bringing up multiple complaints and concerns, this shows the result of the county negligence now affecting the community outside of Lawrenson Road because of increased business operations.
Sir, are you gonna be wrapping up here?
Yep, I got one last sentence. The sound wall does nothing when the club can shoot seven days a week, and when the business rules are not followed like other businesses. This is Auburn. This is not a war zone with shooting seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else here in Auburn want to address the board under public comment? Seeing nobody, anybody in Tahoe want to address the board under public comment? Nope, nobody up in Tahoe? All right. We'll go ahead and move on from public comment at this time, and we move to board member and county executive reports. Any of my colleagues have anything they wish to report out? Okay. I will simply take advantage of the opportunity to let folks know that a number of us spent a little bit of time on our federal legislative advocacy program in Washington, I guess, a week, two weeks ago now. Most notable, we were advocating on behalf of the conservation plan, which, it's amazing the amount of enthusiasm that we receive from the federal agencies about our plan, and how they view our plan, which includes aquatic species, as a model for future plans. So that was very encouraging. And we are, hopefully, steps, just like days, moments away from federal registry listing, which begins a sixty-day clock for comments and all that good stuff. But we are planning on, hopefully, a fall action by our Board of Supervisors on the final Placer County Conservation Plan. Additionally, we had a number of conversations about forest health or lack thereof, given the amount of Placer County that is in federal forest lands. And I think it's fair to say, while the issue is on the minds of both legislators and regulators in Washington, a lot of immediate solutions are not forthcoming. And so our board's prudent action on this item to do what we can to support fuel reductions in our forest areas, I'm afraid we're gonna need to continue doing what we can absent a big federal push. We just have to recognize that's gonna be the way it's gonna be, and we just gotta move forward. And then we had several meetings that were very productive on a number of transportation-related issues, particularly the Placer Parkway, very good meeting with Department of Transportation on the Placer Parkway. So a lot of progress made on a lot of fronts. Just wanted to report that out. Anybody, anything else? All right, seeing none. We will, well, Supervisor Holmes, you have a quick comment on our nine-oh-five item? Are we gonna just continue that, Nana? Would you turn on your microphone, please, sir?
My first.
Thank you. Yes.
The item will be continued to move to May twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Brien, son could not be here.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. All right. And we will move on to our nine-ten timed item. This is a Health and Human Services item, a presentation in regard to Mental Health Awareness Month. Good morning.
Good morning. Supervisor Euler and distinguished members of the board, and welcome to our new members. I'm Amy Ellis. I am the Director with the Adult System of Care, and May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we're gonna celebrate it a little differently this year. I'm going to honor it by highlighting our improved access and quality of adult mental health services. In the last two years, we have increased access to life-saving and effective mental health treatment in Placer County. While I will not be able to go into a great amount of detail on all of these slides, I am happy to do more presentations or meet with you individually to further describe our services. Today, let's see.
Do you have?
Got it. Today, we're gonna focus on adult mental health services and discuss who we serve, the types of services that we offer, how our services are accessed, data, and some other accomplishments that we've done over the last couple of years, our goals for the next two years, and some activities that will honor mental health awareness this month. Okay, so the county offers some services that benefit the entire community, like our prevention services, crisis services, and navigation and linkage, and this is regardless of their type of insurance. We also serve many individuals in the court and the criminal justice system. However, for mental health, our primary responsibility and mandate is to serve individuals who have Medi-Cal or no insurance, and those experiencing severe conditions, for example, hospitalizations, incarcerations, psychosis, and other severe symptoms. Our ongoing clinical services are specialized to this population. People on Medi-Cal who have mild to moderate mental health conditions are served by their managed care plans, either Anthem, California Health and Wellness, or Kaiser. So this slide, lots of information here, but it demonstrates the wide array of services that are offered to adults. So everything from twenty-four-seven access for people who need to know where to go and what to do, to crisis response in the community, to us doing fifty-one-fifty evaluations and psychiatric hospitalizations, different levels of care depending on their needs. So some people need lots of contact, and others can have monthly contact, court-involved interventions, such as assisted outpatient treatment and conservatorship, and supportive housing programs. So how people access our excellent services is probably the question I'm asked the most. ASOC is committed to a no-wrong-door approach, meaning if they show up somewhere but they need something else, we directly link them there. We will partner with anyone in the community to improve our access. The four methods listed here are the easiest ways to access behavioral health services. So first, you could call our twenty-four-seven access line. This is for people either in crisis or a non-urgent need. Second, for non-urgent needs, you can just show up to one of our walk-in screening clinics. This was developed about twenty-two months ago and has dramatically improved access and decreased our no-show rates. Third, we have coordinated entry line for those with housing and sheltering needs. And finally, if someone attends one of our substance use clinics and needs specialty mental health services, they will be automatically linked to that care. Our goal is to make access as easy and efficient as possible. The mental health screening clinic decreased barriers and dramatically improved access. There are less steps now, and you will be seen the same day you come in for service. As a result, the number of people being open to mental health services increased by twenty-six point two percent in the last two years. So these are people who met criteria to be served by specialty mental health. Also, just the sheer number of people being helped and assisted or touched by the community to access the right level of mental health care, even if the county services isn't what they were best suited for, went up a hundred and twenty-five percent. With our old model of access to care, only about eight residents per week were able to be assessed to determine if they could be open to care. And almost fifty percent of them, by the time they got to that step, were determined ineligible, just further delaying their access to the appropriate level of care. Now, we see an average of eighteen individuals per week, and we don't turn anyone away, so it's everyone who shows up, in less time than before, and those who are not eligible are given resources to help them get to the right place for treatment. Finally, the time it takes to be seen by a psychiatrist has dropped from two years ago, an average of fifty-five days, to now, an average of seven days. We also have the ability to screen for urgent need and see many clients the same day for psychiatric Our quality has also improved. When doing a crisis assessment in the community versus at the hospital, and by spending a little more time with each individual, like we do on our mobile crisis teams, only twenty-seven point six percent of those calls result in hospitalization, compared to forty-three point eight percent of those who present at the hospital. We've increased, we've also been working to increase how much revenue we bring in for behavioral health services by focusing on our Medi-Cal billing, and we've increased our billing rates by twelve point seven percent. Twenty-five point three percent of clients participating in Health Three-Sixty, which is a grant program in our wellness centers, lost ten pounds or more. And our full-service partnership clients, that's a very specialized program that serves less people to their caseload, so they can serve them more intensely, they are having great outcomes, such as homelessness being down by twenty-two point six percent, psychiatric hospitalizations down by thirty-six point seven percent, and incarcerations down by forty-six point three percent of those being served by FSPs. and incarcerations down by forty-six point three percent of those being served by FSPs. We have also onboarded a new psychiatric hospital operator, brought mental health services back to the Auburn location, added thirty units of housing, increased utilization of assisted outpatient treatment, received four grants and have submitted three more this year. For the next two years, we have prioritized trying to be strong leaders and cutting-edge in the community around behavioral health and senior issues. We also want to improve our cross-system data awareness to inform how we do treatment and how we do care and to better demonstrate our outcomes. We also really want to continue to focus on increasing housing availability in all levels of care needed for the mental health population. And we want to further increase our Medi-Cal billing rates and obtain additional grants to continue to bring in additional needed funding for mental health services. These goals are in line with our larger Health and Human Services priorities listed here and, and will help to contribute to the success of your board's critical success factors. And that's mapped out right there on the slide. Lastly, we would like to invite you and any interested community member to show your support of mental health matters at any of the three remaining events this May. Placer County is hoping, is hosting our second annual walk from Henry's Lawn at DeWitt on May twenty-first from one to four P M. We hope to see you all there. All right, I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Any board members have any questions? Supervisor Wigan?
Really, just a comment. So thanks, great presentation, I really appreciate the data. I've also always encouraged HHS to come forward with stories from time to time about how your programs affect individual lives. But I, I think when I get out and talk, there isn't a great appreciation in the community for the fact that HHS is actually the largest department in the county, our largest number of employees, our largest budget group. So the actual work that we do and the success that we have is probably underappreciated. So any chance to get up, to get out, I'd encourage you to do that. Also, discussions about, you talked about the work and success having an impact on recidivism and county is also the long-term jail provider in the county. So those kinds of pieces of information, I think are very useful for us and our work and, and yours as well. So thanks.
Yes. Yeah, I hope to be able to bring more information to the community and to this board.
Great, thanks.
All right, any other board members have any questions? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you for the presentation. The board knows I serve on the Mental Health Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, so I keep updated more, more so than a lot of others about what we're doing. And we have five items on our board today that addresses contracts with people that provide services to mental health. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Mental Health Service, Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board for the hard work they do monitoring staff and all the problems and issues that come before us. So thank you again.
Yes, yes, good reminder, they do great work.
Okay, seeing no more board comments, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? Okay, our board is being asked to officially recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? You have your recognition.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our nine twenty-five timed item is Granite Bay Parks Trails and Open Space. This is the annual adjustment of the Assessment District, which will include a public hearing to formally modify the assessment should we so choose.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ted Rel, I'm with the Parks Division of Public Works. And I'm here before you today to recommend adoption of a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for ordering the levy of assessments for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen and twenty for the Granite Bay Parks Trails Open Space Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District. This Recreation Improvement District was voted for and approved by the voters of Granite Bay in two thousand one and includes approximately eight thousand parcels. The county currently owns, operates and maintains eight parks, thirty miles of multi-use trails and twenty miles of bikeways, which are dispersed throughout the improvement district. This assessment allows for an annual cost of living adjustment, otherwise a COLA, based on the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, not to exceed three percent. If approved, the COLA will be two dollars and fifty-two cents, which added to last year's assessment would be a total of eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents, excuse me, for a pet, per assessed parcel. The total two thousand nineteen and twenty budget for the district is estimated at a little over eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, with eighty-seven percent of the funds coming from the assessed parcels and thirteen percent of the budget being contributed by general fund fees and interest for general benefit. The approval process for enacting this annual COLA and adjusting the assessment is a three-part process, which began with your board giving approval to begin the preparation of the Engineers Report on February fifth. On April ninth, we came to your board with a second step to approve the Engineers Report and intent to levy the adjusted assessment, which was approved with resolution. And today, we are here at your board in the third and final step to enact the two thousand nineteen and twenty assessment. And with that, I leave this item with the chair and will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any board members have any questions? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to taking action? We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure?
No approval. Second.
Yeah, motion Holmes, second Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we, wow, we caught right up. Okay, we are a minute or two short, so we'll jump to a department head item to fill the time. We've got a CEDRA presentation as our first item. Do we have, nope, folks aren't in the room for that one. They're in A? They're in A? I think they'll sprint right on over as we take up the item. How about HHS? We have, is it twi, I don't see it here. Wow. By the time they get here, we'll be at nine forty, so. Why don't we go ahead and have planning to step on up? We'll get prepared. Mr. Masha, if you want to step up here, or you can stay where you are, that's fine. So you don't need to come up yet. Just sit in the front row for now, it'll be fine. All right, I got nine forty on the official world phone, so we'll go ahead and jump in.
Good morning, EJ Maldi with the Planning Services Division. And I would like to introduce Bennett Smithart, who will be presenting this item.
Good morning.
Thank you, EJ. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. As EJ said, I'm Bennett Smithart with the Planning Services Division. Our next item is a third-party appeal by Mr. John Masha of the Planning Commission's denial of an appeal to the zoning administrator's approval of a parcel map modification. The subject parcel is located at six zero eight five Seven Cedars Place in Granite Bay. Parcel is owned residential agriculture, combining a building site of a hundred thousand square feet and is designated rural residential, two point three to four point six acres minimum in the Granite Bay Community Plan. The topography on the two point eight acre parcel is generally flat. The site slopes two point six percent from the south property line to the banks of Linda Creek, which is the north property line. There are single-family dwellings on to the west, southeast, and there's an agriculture facility to the north. The parcel is developed with a forty-eight hundred square foot, single-family dwelling, a pool with a patio, landscaping and a driveway. Going back to a little bit of the history of the parcel, there's eighteen years of code enforcement history on this parcel, which includes, we're not limited to, storage of materials and commercial vehicles in a riparian area, grading and placing fill within the floodplain and unlawful land use. Three, three previous code enforcement cases were opened and closed under the previous ownership. The property is now in a different ownership and there is one open code enforcement case. A wrought iron open fence was placed in the riparian protection area shown on the information sheet. Approval of this parcel map modification will correct this enforcement violation. So your board is here to consider a third-party appeal filed by Mr. John Masha of the Planning Commission's January twenty-fourth denial of the appeal of the zoning administrator's October eighteenth approval of the parcel map modification to update the location of the hundred-year floodplain and riparian protection area on the P seven five seven oh one parcel map information sheet with current field data. Going to the first part, we're looking at the floodplain. So the request is to modify the floodplain, the hundred-year floodplain on parcel one based on a recently completed study now recognized by FEMA. The study places the base flood elevation for parcel one about one foot lower than the earlier draft study used in nineteen ninety-nine. An on-site, on-site field survey was completed by CNA Engineering, who is the applicant for the modification, is dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Next is the riparian protection area. The applicant is requesting to clarify the riparian protection area shown on the nineteen ninety-nine parcel map information sheet. Studies have completed by Marcus H. Boyle and Associates in two thousand two and two thousand four, which was updated in two thousand sixteen, provided to the county as part of previous code enforcement activity. These studies have determined that the existing riparian habitat was located approximately fifty to seventy feet from the center line of Linda Creek. Next is, this is a map from Marcus H. Boyle and Associates. This is the mapping of the riparian habitat. So the solid line to the north is the edge of the riparian habitat. And just south of that, the dash line is the requested hundred feet from the banks of Linda Creek. So the new riparian area is fully within the, the new requested setback. So in summary, approval of this parcel map modification of the hundred-year floodplain and the riparian protection area allows for a one-foot elevation difference, which results in about a fifty-feet horizontal northerly shift in the floodplain limits due to the relatively flat terrain. The riparian area would be changed as a hundred feet from center line of Linda Creek. Next, we're going into some previous public hearings. The item originally went to the zoning administrator on October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. The appellant spoke in opposition to this, citing illegal grading and concerns of it being left over. The zoning administrator agreed that illegal grading happened and he said, "It is likely some fill remains, but not to a significant level." The modification was approved. And it was appealed to the January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission. The Planning Commissioners questioned, questioned evidence that fill remained in the floodplain today. The appeal was denied with a vote of seven to zero. So from there, the Planning Commission's item was appealed to today. On February fourth, the appellant submitted a letter of appeal noting three items. The first is the Planning Commission did not consider the evidence showing that the flood elevation changed from illegal activity. Two, there's no evidence that fill has been removed. And three, real estate brokers and appraisers agree that this map modification will result in a decline in my property value. So moving to one, the Planning Commission did not consider the evidence. So next, we'll just show the evidence. So these are the historical photographs of, of when these violations occurred, including the fill within the floodplain. So you can see with the red arrows, there are mounds of dirt that the previous property owner brought in. And this includes the, putting this dirt in the floodplain and riparian area. So an analysis of these photographs, we needed something for reference. The applicant CNA Engineering provided us with a photograph. This is out on the site, is a tape measure extended to three feet. So you can get kind of an idea of what three feet would look like. The area surrounding it is generally flat. The red arrow points to the location, what we believe is where one of the mounds of dirt are. So if you take a look at that, it is very flat. So zoom out a little bit, this is the entire site. So when you look through here, you do not see mounds of dirt and it looks fairly close to natural condition and flat. The second item is there's no evidence that fill has been removed. So staff worked with the applicant CNA Engineering to get a topographic survey of the site to kind of analyze the site, how it stands today and see if there is indeed fill remaining. So the, on the right side of the exhibit is the nineteen ninety-nine parcel topo map. And on the left is the two thousand eighteen map, color coordinated based on the exact contour lines. So you can see they're basically the same contour lines. There, there are some, some, I guess, more wiggles or moves in the contour lines in two thousand eighteen and these could be things like ruts or something. All the legal activity, they're putting trucks and stuff out there, so they, they left ruts. There's one spot on the three thirty-five elevation, it's in pink or purple. On the east side, you see it dips, it goes farther to the north than when it originally did in nineteen ninety-nine. This is likely an area where there's, was a pallet of dirt and there's a few inches, just a matter of inches of some of this dirt that was left over. So it just kind of confirms that there's no fill remaining in, in the floodplain today. There might be a few inches just throughout the removal process. So third item, real estate brokers and appraisers agree that this map modification will result in a decline in my property value. So we took a look at the letters that the appellant sent us and they kind of mentioned two big things. They said this map modification is not compliant with the Subdivision Map Act. So the Subdivision Map Act allows us to correct a parcel map if there is no burden on the fee owners of real property on the parcel map. And so we believe that Mr. Masha does not own parcel one or any easement, so he would not be considered a fee owner, so he is not being impacted by this modification. The second item they addressed was the, the modification would impact the value of the property. So when we analyzed the letters, the basically they came up with, once you remove open space near the property, they would negatively impact it. So right now, the owner of parcel one, he is allowed to build a shed or something like that. At Wright, he's allowed to, to modify the open space. And so this modification will just allow for alternative locations of the open space. So no additional removal of open space, just alternative locations. So we don't believe it would impact the value of this property. Next, with the appeal, there was some photographs submitted of some, some ponding. And so, and this is the, the western edge of parcel two, the appellant's parcel. And this shows some ponding, maybe a few inches of ponding. So on a rural parcel like this one, the county does not enforce drainage to the level of this minor ponding, just a few inches on a rural parcel like this one. All right, so down to the recommendation. First item, action to take is deny the appeal by Mr. John Masha. Two, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the appeal and to uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the parcel map modification request supported by the findings stated in the staff report. And three, find the project categorically exempt from CEQA, Sections fifteen, three, zero, five, minor alterations to land use limitations. I'm available for any questions and my colleagues from Engineering Surveying Division is here as well to get those questions answered.
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Wigan?
In the prior picture where you showed the ponding, is that, am I correct in assuming that that is completely out of the floodplain in either of the two floodplain delineations?
Good morning, for the record, Daniel Dotay, Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying. That is correct Supervisor Wigan, that is outside of the floodplain.
Thanks.
Supervisor Gustafson?
I had a quick question on that, and I may have missed this. It's quite a lengthy packet with all the documentation we've been provided. When was the illegal fence placed? Approximately when, has, how long has that been in place?
I know it was, it was during the code enforcement case was opened in two thousand eighteen. I don't know when they built it. I don't have that date, it wasn't.
Okay.
My colleagues, okay, yeah, I do not have, it was two thousand eighteen.
Is, you knew it was there in two thousand eighteen, but you don't know when it was built?
Correct, correct. It was reported to code compliance in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, Supervisor Gore?
I've got a couple of questions, but we'll hear from the appellant, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I'll wait until I hear from the appellant.
Just a quick couple of questions of staff prior to hearing from the appellant. Are you aware that there was legal action between the appellant and the previous owner? County wasn't a party to it, I just want to know if county's aware. Okay. I'm sure he'll speak to it. Would you please jump back a few slides back to the topo map? Thank you. Nope, that's the one, right there. So the one on the right is the historic, the one on the left is the updated.
Correct.
In every instance, it appears that the topography has changed with it being elevated to, in each instance, the topo line's extending closer to the creek with elevation. I don't see a single area where it went the other direction, which is consistent with the activity that I've seen on that parcel over the last decade-ish, and the amount of dirt and other things that were moved onto that parcel. What I'm wondering is, the historic line looks to be somewhere around that three thirty-five line, the historic riparian habitat line. So is the updated FEMA map saying that the three thirty-five elevation is no longer considered the floodplain or riparian habitat? Could you draw the distinction between why in the previous map, or the original map recorded nineteen ninety-nine, the, we recorded a map that showed that approximately that three thirty-five line as the edge of the riparian habitat versus today? What has changed?
Again, for the record, Daniel Dotay, Deputy Director of Engineering Surveying. So there are two different components to that question, I believe. The riparian was mapped as one unit, and the floodplain was mapped based on the floodplain information. I believe in nineteen ninety-nine, they were coincident, and I believe on two thousand and eighteen topography, they are not. I believe they were mapped separately with the riparian limits being proposed at the one-hundred-foot setback, if I'm not mistaken, which is different than the new floodplain limit.
And so I guess that's my question, is that arguably, if the elevation hadn't changed, then the habitat condition probably wouldn't have changed. Is that a fair assumption?
I don't believe they changed concurrently. I believe there are two separate processes.
So if we're distinguishing between the riparian habitat, which is what the no-go order historically has been, is on the riparian habitat, and we're not saying that we have new data relative to riparian habitat, we're saying we have new data relative to the floodplain. And the applicant, not the appellant, to be clear, the applicant who's applying for this modification, is saying that he would just like the county to abandon the previous designation of the riparian habitat to make it coincident with the new data associated with the hundred-year floodplain. But it's offered nothing to say that the area in question is no longer riparian habitat, which is what we had previously on the nineteen ninety-nine map said you have to stay out of. Am I, is that not correct? Am I missing something there?
So the biological report we had, they originally mapped the riparian habitat in two thousand and two, and they went back in two thousand and sixteen and confirmed that it's still as it was.
It is still riparian habitat?
Yeah, so both in two thousand and two and two thousand and sixteen, they confirmed that the line in the previous slide was riparian habitat.
Okay. And so previously, we'd had a directive in the ninety-nine map that said that we don't let people build in the riparian habitat if that extends beyond one-hundred feet from center line or the one-hundred-year floodplain, whichever's greater, which is our county policy on building setbacks, as opposed to riparian habitat, which is a separate issue, correct?
Yeah, in nineteen ninety-nine, I would have been the person handling it, and I can tell you how we would have looked at that condition, because I'm the one that placed it. Essentially, when I was dealing with the applicant, what we told him was, your setback is a hundred feet from the center line of Linda Creek, or the hundred-year floodplain, or if the riparian habitat extends beyond the floodplain, which rarely, rarely happens.
But in this case, it looks like it did.
Maybe. That your setback, your setback would be at whichever one is more restrictive. And that would have sort of just been how we would have handled it in ninety-nine. Would we handle it that way now? No, we would not. But that's the way it was. It was sort of like, here are the two, hundred-year floodplain, I mean, hundred-year floodplain or the hundred-foot setback. Whichever one is greater, and whichever one is greater, as long as it's out of the riparian habitat, you're fine.
I get that. And I guess my question is, it looks to me like the applicant wants the best of both worlds. I want to recognize the new one-hundred-year floodplain line and have that be the extent of the riparian habitat. And oh, by the way, there wasn't enough modification on the site in order to change the topography. So that's not why I'm asking for it, even though clearly there was modification that changed the topography. But if there wasn't enough modification on the site to change the topography, then what was riparian habitat in nineteen ninety-nine should still be riparian habitat today unless something has happened to change the riparian habitat.
Yeah, and I think, did we get another update on the riparian habitat?
Just from, it was originally got in two thousand and two, then in two thousand and sixteen, they confirmed that it's still. So the, I spoke with Marcus H. Boyle, and so he based his riparian habitat analysis on like soil conditions. So if you removed it, this is where the riparian habitat grows. So if it's removed, or there's a drought or something like that, and so he's, like, this is the area where it will do. So it's based on the soil and not on current plants, like this is where it will grow.
By the way, welcome.
Yes.
Given this is your first hearing in front of the board, this is a fun one for you.
So is the riparian habitat well within the hundred-year floodplain?
Yes, and I can go back to that slide right quick. It's, it meanders fifty to seventy feet. So this, this is the edge of riparian habitat, and this was the, I believe, this was the two thousand and sixteen update of the two thousand and two analysis. So the riparian habitat is the solid line, the requested hundred feet from the banks of Linda Creek is the dotted line right here.
All right. All right, any other questions by board members right now before I hear from the, yes?
So on that, sorry, I'm a little fuzzy and cold-ridden and allergy-ridden, but you had said that in two thousand and two and two thousand and sixteen, the riparian line, did it change from nineteen ninety-nine?
So the earliest data we have is from two thousand and two.
Okay.
So we didn't have the data that was used to create this. Looking at the record, it doesn't appear there was a biologist that determined riparian habitat in nineteen ninety-nine. So the earliest we have is two thousand and two, which was confirmed in two thousand and sixteen. It's still the same riparian habitat over the past.
Floodplain line changes, the riparian habitat is now within that floodplain line?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We will hear from the appellant at this time. Mr. Masha, if you want to step forward and address the board, you'll have ten minutes for your presentation.
Good morning, board members, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Masha. My presentation, I do as fast as I can, three parts. Number one, Subdivision Map Act. Now, if you would put the final map on the screen with the easement on it, would you do that, just very quickly? The final map? No, it shows the whole final map. You had it.
That one, that one?
No, no, go, yeah, right, this one, this one, right here. Please look at this final map. I'm the owner of parcel two. Parcel one is the applicant who wants to change the map. You can see, I handed out pictures of the house this morning, that my house is located in the back. I had to build the house in the back because of the easement of the, if you can see that sewer easement going. I could not build my house in front of the lot like the other ones. I had to build the house in the back, go in the back. So I purchased this lot with the map the way it is. That's what I counted on, and I purchased it, and I built the house, taking advantage of that open space back there. And architectural design of my house is solely oriented towards that riparian-protected area. And as I have shown, the pictures will prove that, that I emailed pictures to everyone from my balcony, from my backyard, you can see directly to that. Now, I built the house because this is how it was. Then the Subdivision Map Act says, that, I read it, that modifications should not impose any additional burden on the fee owners of the real property, and the modifications do not alter any right titles or interests in the real estate property. Well, I got, real estate appraisers and real estate agents have written a letter, which I have submitted, that yes, if you, if I was going to list your house right now, the value would be less. They actually came to the house physically, looked at it, they looked how the house is built to look towards that riparian-protected area. If I'm, if I'm going to market my house, they are, they're going to have to list it less compared to. And then appraisers says the same thing. So per Subdivision Map Act, this modification cannot occur. Well, if the rules change after I purchase the property, fine. These rules should, it's not retroactive to go back and change all the riparian area in Placeta County. From now on, apply the new rules, like everything else, it's not. Anyhow, the staff argues, well, this is his property, you're not burdened by, by, by this modification. Well, subdivision map, what is subdivision map? The title, the title says subdivision map, map act. Now, it's not an individual lot act. So the fee owners means, the owners that are contained in that map, like in this case, it's two parcels. So when it says subdivision map, the fee owners should not be burdened means all the owners in that map. Mr. Rick Erie, God bless him, he is the deputy assistant. He wrote an email saying the same thing I just said, and I submitted the email, Rick Erie's email, which they do not bring it up. The Rick Erie's email said what I said. In this case, it's two parcels, and I am burdened. I would invite any of you come and see it for yourself, which Supervisor Ulliot. So I am burdened by, per subdivision map, this cannot occur. If you say this, this burden, it is his own property, no, it's not. So this is about subdivision. And then the other sections, this is section six-six-four-seven-two, that says, I am burdened by this. It's in the map. Somebody argued that, look, then again, it's his property, it is not, it's just the whole map. Now, that's, the other section talks about environmental issue. Yeah, there was fill, there was automobile chop shop going here, there was hazardous material, you name it, it was used. Paint, cleaning agent, pesticides, combustible material, this land is contaminated. Now, the Placeta County environmental guy went there, oh, I walked it, I didn't see anything. That's not a hazardous material study. Hazardous material study is when you go take soil samples and actually prove something that you can stand on. Say, look, we've tested it, and there is no hazardous material. So riparian-protected area, that place was a marshland. They had to fill it. And if they didn't fill it, all the cars would, they would sink. So I'm going to part two real quick. This area was used illegally for eighteen years. Placeta County failed me. I developed health issues because of this stress I went through. Now, there wasn't, the Placeta County gentleman came here and says there was three code enforcement issues. It wasn't three, it was more than seven, eight. They took the guy to the court for three times, and the ruling came out that he moved everything out of the floodplain. Well, why did he move it? Because we had, because we had leverage. We had leverage that he was using illegally, the riparian-protected area, to store all of that stuff. And he was filling it gradually. And if I didn't have that leverage, nothing would have happened, you see? And that's how I built my house. I wish I never had. I wish I never had, really. So it's quite unfair to go have me through, this is my life here, to have me go build my house like that, to the map that I purchased. They handed us the map, they said, this is what you're buying. That other gentleman, this is what you're buying. So now come and say, just like Supervisor Ulliot indicated, you want both walls. Well, no, now that I can change it, I'm going to forget about you, and you're going to change the map. So they say, well, the grading, this is really, really a blow to my head. They show a picture of pilot there, and then they show a picture now. Well, it's nothing there. Well, of course it's not, they flattened everything. Not even one ounce of dirt was moved. I didn't say three feet of dirt, I said up to three feet. They spread it all out. I have videotape showing, they brought it there and compact, you see the tractor compacting it. Nothing, I have Joe Sorello's letter, I have witnesses, I have pictures. They brought theirs for eighteen years and never moved one ounce of it. And the staff is coming here, coming here and saying, property, as it says, a few inches left after the removal. What was removed? No, no dirt was removed. I have witnesses, I have pictures, I can prove it anywhere. So extensive grading was done. Who says that? I say that. Art Davidson, God bless him, he says, Art Davidson, I didn't make this up. I submitted Art Davidson's letter. He says extensive grading was done. This is started back nineteen, two thousand and three. Every month, I have documentation. You pick up anybody at Placeta County that hasn't received a letter from me, saying, look, there is up to three feet of dirt here, Wes Zicker, God bless him. I wrote, I said this dirt must be removed. It fall into death ears. So what do you want to know? That the dirt is still there? Yeah, it's a vast area when you flatten it, it's hard to see physically. But the way technology is nowadays, you can hire a soil engineer, they can test all, they can tell you how much fill is anywhere. Not just look at it, take a picture, oh, there is no dirt there. Just, just first, they said, there is, the dirt is removed. Saying that dirt is removed is the biggest insult to any logical-minded person. You have no evidence to back up that the dirt is removed. Who says that dirt is removed? Do you have any picture? Do you have any letters? Do you have any, anything? Where are they? Who can say that? So I have been abused for eighteen years. I have developed health issue. I wish I never bought this place. You go ahead and buy a map, buy a place like that, spend all your money in your lifetime, build a house, and then later on say, oh, it's not your lot, it's subdivision map, it's his property, he can. No, subdivision map, if, if there was any trespassing issues, if there is anything, we don't need subdivision map act, the trespassing have the axe himself.
Mr. Masha, we need you to wrap up your comments at this time, if you would, please.
Okay, all right. I'm going to conclude in about one minute. Conclusion. There is no compelling reason to change this map. Why would he want to change the map? Somebody asked the applicant that. He said to me, he's not going to build anything. He says he wants to change the map because he built the fence illegally, and he doesn't want to spend the money to remove the fence. Now, look how much more money he spent on the engineering and everything to do all of this. But he can't spend But he can't spend $1,000 to move a fence. That's not true. So, there is no compelling reason. Some, some of you should ask, why would you want to change this map? Go through this gigantic step, set a bad precedent in the county that, okay, fill up the floodplain, and then later on, go change the map. And then, the staff comes and say, oh, I took a picture, there is no dirt there. That's silly. So, there is no compelling reason to change the map.
Mr. Masha, at this time, if you could, please just conclude your remarks.
Thank you. That's it, that's it. Any questions, I can answer.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Masha, and thank you for meeting with me last week. So, I think your concern is that the delineation, the change in the delineation of the floodplain interferes with your ability to enjoy your property. Is that your concern?
Correct. Yes, yes.
And I don't know who can answer this question, but what benefit does the neighboring property have with the change of the floodplain? Can anybody ask me, is there a benefit?
To my knowledge, none.
I think he's asking staff.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that. I think changing the floodplain line changes, you know, the setback, and it would allow, you know, anything that is allowed in that zone district, accessory structures to be built closer to that line than before, or to the new line.
So, is an accessory structure a barn?
Could be a barn, could be a shed, you know, any, anything enjoyed by other property owners with the same zoning.
It's not a dwelling unit.
Could be a secondary dwelling, could be, yes.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, he already has his secondary unit.
He has an attached secondary dwelling unit, so he already has his, so.
All right. By our ordinance, a detached unit could also be constructed, even if you have an attached, correct?
You could have a guest house in addition to a secondary dwelling, so yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Supervisor Holmes? Supervisor Wagen.
My question's more of staff, Mr. Masha, but, so, knowing that riparian places, streams, rivers, cause just by themselves, changes in the floodplain over time, bigger, smaller sedimentation, that kind of thing. One, I'm curious as to why FEMA chose to review the FEMA delineation, if we have that information. And then, secondly, Mr. Masha's position is that the dirt was not removed, but spread, which obviously would change the floodplain. So, was there any work done to try to determine that core samples? Or do we have any information as it relates to why the floodplain delineation was reviewed, and what may have caused the change in this case, and how that might relate to what we're considering?
Supervisor Wagen, I know a little bit of information on the floodplain. My understanding is that it has been in the works by FEMA for many years. That reach of that Linda Creek was always on the books to be mapped more final, if you will, and that the neighbors had been notified in advance of that mapping as well. So, that was running its course prior to any of these additional concepts coming forward. And as to, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question to Phil?
I guess, one foot vertical change in the floodplain sounds like a lot to someone who's not an engineer or not an expert in this. So, were there any other investigations done as to, are there not, the change in the elevation could have been as a result of the dirt being spread, as compared to it just being sedimentation or a lack of accurate delineation prior to the more recent delineation?
Okay. So, as to the dirt being spread, staff is relying on the topographic surveys, 1999 and 2018, both performed by licensed land surveyors by California. The similarities are, for the contours, are very close. And those are one foot contour elevations, so where there is a disparity, that runs half of a contour, that would imply at most six inches or so of fill. So, the topographic surveys, to us, to staff, do not suggest substantial changes, pre and current.
All right. I had seen a light down here, did that change?
Yes, I've got to ask a couple of questions, please.
Okay, go ahead, Supervisor Wagen.
So, I did want to clarify about the, the fill being removed. In twenty, I asked the question, in 2016, code enforcement had gone out, and then, you know, there was issues out there. Code enforcement went out, there was an action against the previous property owner, and then county went out. And did the county confirm that that land, that the fill had been removed?
Yes, we checked the code file yesterday on that topic, and per the logs in the code file in August 2016, code enforcement confirmed the fill had been removed and closed that case formally.
And had any activity taken place on that property between 2016 and 2018 with the new property owner?
There was no indication in the file that anything else has occurred since that time.
Then I have a question about this, the map act, the subdivision map act. As I was reading the subdivision map, map act, it looks like, you've got the copy of what the appellant has shown, any additional burden on the present fee owners of the real property, that a correction shouldn't be made if there's any additional burden on the fee owners of the real property, and it does not alter any right title or interest to the real property reflected on the recorded map. So, you've got the parcel map, two parcels, there's a change in the floodplain, which changes the map. And I asked you previously, that that modification would not affect the appellant's interest in real property. I want to understand a little bit more, because we talked about the difference between the map and information sheet. So, you're saying that the map is not being changed, but the information sheet is. Except, when I look at this, we're actually talking about the map being modified. So, I've got a little bit of confusion here about what's what. If you want to clarify, that would be really helpful.
Leslie Amsperry, County Surveyor. So, an information sheet is attached to the parcel map, and it contains information that does not affect record title interest, that's specified in the map act. Information sheets contain additional information that the agency would like to see filed with the map. They contain things like restrictions, flood zone, hazard zones, geologic mapping, driveway lengths, things like that. They do not delineate or create easements, they're not easement rights. So, in this case, the riparian setback area and the 100-year floodplain were delineated on the information sheet, which was recorded with the map. There's a statement on the information sheet that indicates that the additional information is for informational purposes, describing conditions as of the date of filing, and is not intended to affect record title interest. The additional information is derived from public reports or records, and does not imply the correctness or sufficiency of those records or reports by the preparer of the information sheet. So, this is, these are non-title items that are placed on the information sheet. And, and that's what you're seeing right there, is the actual sheet. The statements that I just read are down in the lower left-hand corner. The subdivision map act does provide for doing corrections or updates, as I would, as I would call them, to the information sheet. And John is correct, it says, if the corrections do not impose any additional burden on the present fee owners of the real property, it does not alter any right title or interest in the real property reflected on the recorded map. So, there are no view easements. So, if we're talking about a view that's changed, there are no view easements. This is changing strictly information that is shown on the information sheet. Does that answer your question?
So, you're changing the information sheet, not necessarily the parcel map? Or are you changing the parcel map? I mean, it looks like we're making a change to the parcel map.
You, you would, the information sheet is the last sheet of the map, I believe it's a two or three sheet map, sheet, yeah, sheet one would contain the statements and the, the boundary, the, all the bearings and the distances that define the parcels, that define the easements, that have the dedications. This, this sheet is just for informational purposes. So, yes, it is changing, updating information that, that is shown on the information sheet. What would end up happening would be a certificative correction would be filed on the map to denote a change on the information sheet only.
But the subdivision map hasn't been changed as far as property line and easements?
No, that would, that would affect record title interest, and that would not be allowed.
Okay. So, the property lines and easements haven't been changed, is the use of the parcel one?
It's, it's the restrictions and delineations, the location of the 100-year floodplain, and the location of the riparian protection area that are proposed to be changed. Their positions are proposed to be changed to the north, sliding towards the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions by board, I'm sorry, I need you.
I had one more.
Yes.
Mr. Masha, can you clarify, and thank you also for meeting with me and briefing me on this issue. Can you clarify when this, the current fence that's in the illegal area was constructed, and by which owner it was constructed?
The, the fence, the illegal fence was constructed last summer.
By the current owner?
By the current owner, yes.
Okay, okay.
And I have a rebuttal.
Okay, no.
No. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
After that, yeah. I have a rebuttal too.
Mr. Masha, may I ask you to take a seat? We, this is a public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us closing public hearing and bringing it back to the board for action? Morning.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Steve Norman, I'm with CNA Engineering, or the firm that did the topographic survey out there to compile data, to see how it compares with the map, the previous map. And I just want to say that I, I've been out there personally myself, walked the site with my survey crew, and the discussion about the fill, when you're out there, you can see there's lots of trees there, and you can see there's no fill up, up the trees. You can see where the tree lines go right down to the ground, where the normal trees. The crew, when they surveyed the property, we found original survey monuments that were set by Mr. Masha when they surveyed the property, and those survey pins are still right at, we didn't have to dig for them, they're right sticking up out of the ground at ground level. So, that told us that there was no fill or any placement of fill in that area, otherwise the monuments would have been covered up and stuff. So, it, it was, we were pretty satisfied that the topo that we shot is accurate and compares close to what the original ones showed. So, I'm just here to certify the grades that we have.
Quick question, the monument pins that you found, were they on the property line?
Yes.
So, they were not internal to the project?
They weren't not, yeah, they're right along the fence line. And if there was fill, you would have seen it jump up, but the grades are all real flat in that whole area.
Thank you.
There was no grade change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board under public comment? So, the, the original applicant who was requesting modifications, not here to speak to the issue. Okay.
CNA Engineering is the applicant.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. I'm going to close public hearing, bring it back to the board. Would you do me a favor and change the slides to the slide that shows the property from the site? The picture, it was a picture.
Photograph.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, actually, that was an interesting one, but that's all right, you can go ahead, go on forward, keep going. Yep, no, go back one. Yeah, that's kind of looking across, looking up. So, I'm just going to share with my colleagues my observations. What's interesting about this, this is the area that was previously identified as riparian habitat. What do you not see? Riparian habitat. There are no grasses on there, there's nothing on there. If you were to take a picture the other direction, along the same topographical lines that showed on the original map, as I stood out there on the property with the original map, showing the topographical lines, if you were to take a picture going the other direction, you would see nothing but native grasses in the area designated as the riparian habitat that's on Mr. Masha's parcel. On this parcel, there's not a blade of grass to be found, there's no habitat to be found whatsoever. So, clearly, something has changed. So, we're being asked here today, and I'm, I'm going to once again go back to the distinction between the redefinition of the floodplain versus the riparian habitat. And on the map, it was determined that they couldn't build in the riparian habitat, and now we're being told that essentially, the riparian habitat is more or less coincident with the 100-year floodplain, stays within the 100-year floodplain. That may be true, because right now, a biologist would be very hard pressed to go out to that site, look at that parcel, and make a claim that it's riparian habitat because of all the activity that took place out there, which I personally witnessed, actually, while the bulldozers were out there, while all this was going on, in my 12-year history with this parcel and code enforcement and Ted Ralph, he's still in the room, meeting me out there on site and getting our feet wet as we're walking through this stuff. The other thing that causes me concern, we've heard a number of comments about the parcel map. We do have a letter from Rick Erie in June of 2016, so three years ago, which was issued to the previous owner, I recognize. However, I think if, in fact, our interpretation of our deputy director at the time is consistent with today, I don't see how we today make a determination that the neighbor is not impacted, because condition number three, as Rick was lining out for Mr. Johnson, what he had to do in order to make his changes, page 77 of our staff report, by the way. You'll read condition number three, where he clearly delineates that, once it's deemed technically correct, the, the designation, and he even calls out, changes to the riparian area and floodplain in condition number one, two different designations, riparian area and floodplain. We've heard testimony that the floodplain might have changed by virtue of FEMA updating its maps. But again, what changed the riparian area? Once it's deemed technically correct, and the changes do not impose any additional burden on the present fee owners of the real property parcel map, and does not alter any right title or interest in the real property reflected on the recorded map. Two parcels in this case, Mr. Erie clearly recognizing that a change to parcel one could potentially have an impact to parcel two. Which gets us to the aerial provided by Mr. Masha. And of course, this is inverted, north is to the bottom of the page, so you're holding it upside down, you're seeing the addresses upside down. Mr. Masha's house is on the left, the property in question is on the right. Mr. Masha's house, as you can see, has on its easternmost edge, all the way on the left side of the page, you can see the area that's kind of built out a little further. Having stood in the family room down below, and the room upstairs, and the balcony upstairs, I can tell you that the entire orientation of the living quarters of the house, both upstairs and downstairs, are oriented right toward this area, right toward the riparian habitat. And so, to say that a modification of that area to allow construction of a barn, sizable shed, even a secondary dwelling unit, would not have an impact on the interest of the real property, I think is, is not, well, it's disingenuous. The question was raised about view easements, and are there view easements on the property? No, there aren't view easements, and Mr. Masha's never asserted that there are view easements. However, there is the reasonable person standard. And when you have the two parcels that are created, one with, with the sewer easement right down, going, cutting diagonally through the property as it does, creating one building area that's further to the south, one building area that's further to the north, and a delineated floodplain and riparian habitat, while there is not a, an actual easement that was granted from the western parcel to the eastern parcel, it was certainly reasonable for the parcel owner to the east to expect that, that was going to be what his view was, I believe. And then finally, for me, what, what really tipped this in the appellant's favor for me. In, in law, and I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, but in law, we do have the standard, the fruit of the poisonous tree, which says that any evidence obtained by virtue of an illegal search is therefore illegal itself, can't be admitted. And I view that- And I view that parcel and its current condition today essentially in that light. The parcel as it exists today, if somebody were to come in and draw a map today, I completely agree with staff that it would be reasonable to say this is a buildable area. However, given my 12-year history with this parcel, with the neighbor, with the flat-out illegal activity that I personally witnessed taking place on site, with vehicles being towed in and cut apart there, and vehicle remnants being thrown out into the riparian habitat, and these 40-foot storage containers that were parked in the riparian habitat, and all the rest, it, it is my contention that it was the illegal activity that was taking place on that parcel prior to the previous owner buying it out of foreclosure, with the habitat identified, by the way, but buying it out of foreclosure. It, it was that previous activity, illegal activity, that resulted in a parcel that sits relatively bare of any kind of habitat that one could remotely call riparian. And so I have no doubt that should something like this have been brought into staff today as a map, staff would look at it rightfully, deem this is not riparian habitat. However, the way that it got that way, I think, needs to be recognized in this request. And so with that, I will, I think I've made my position clear, and I will let any of my colleagues address the item whom I want to. Or we can just go straight to a motion, if anybody's ready. Supervisor Holmes?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the third party of appeal filed by John Masha.
Okay, we have a motion. Supervisor Wagon, any thoughts?
Yeah, and I'll second, and I want to make a comment.
Yes, please.
Briefly. So I, trouble to say that I actually essentially agree with you, Mr. Chair, but just wanted to make that clear for the record. I want to, over the years, recently, several of us on the board have expressed a desire to beef up our code enforcement. I think we've done that, we may have some distance to go, but I, I'm influenced by the injury that has occurred to Mr. Masha over the years. I agree with Kirk, that if you were to look at this today with the new delineation, the floodplain you've brought forward, evidence makes me feel comfortable that the dirt has in fact essentially been approved, but I think Mr. Masha inappropriately suffered far too much and far too long for code violations, and I hope that we learn from that and take forward a much more strong and efficient effort in that regard.
And i-if I may, Supervisor Wagon, rest assured, I do not view this as a failing of our code enforcement. I was out there numerous time with our, times with our code enforcement folks, I was out there with the previous SEDRA director, Mr. Johnson, when, as fate would have it, Mr. Shepherd, excuse me, Mr. Johnson, Shep Johnson, that very day that I'm out there with Michael Johnson, he has yet another 40-foot long container being delivered to his house to be stored down in the riparian habitat, and managed to take out his own mailbox as the guy was trying to position it in, in there. Our code enforcement folks did everything they could, which is why we ended up, this, this ended up in court, and, and he had to be forced through the courts to, this was simply a bad actor. And that's why, that's why I brought up the, the Fruit of the Poisonous Tree analogy, is, is we just had a person out there who, who acted in bad faith all the way along, and I believe this is the result of that. So I, our code enforcement folks, I think, did a fine job, but to your point, our board has recognized that we might need a little bit more of that, and we're doing what we can. Anybody else? All right, we do have a motion, Holmes, and a second by Wagon, to uphold Mr. Masha's appeal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a SEDRA item, Regional University Specific Plan.
Good morning. Jennifer Bias, Planning Services Division here to present this item. What's being proposed here today is we're bringing forward the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve amendments to the certified EIR for the Regional University Specific Plan project, as well as approve specific plan amendments and amendments to development standards, design guidelines, and approve a reinstated, amended and reinstated development agreement. The specific plan was approved in 2008, and I'm just going to go into a little bit of background, as a master plan community, it has approximately 1,157 acres. There is a community piece to this that has 3,232 residential units, along with commercial, open space, and parks. And then there was also a component, or is also a component for a university that would potentially accommodate 6,000 students with other academic type facilities, including student housing, administrative, performance athletic facilities, and a retirement village was proposed. The total residential units for the whole development was 4,387 units. The project is located in West Placer County. In the general plan area, shown here on the screen as green, the access to the site is along Brewer Road, which is just to the west of the project. The current site is zoned for the specific plan, and the Regional University Specific Plan accesses zoning out there, the proposed, or the existing uses is all agriculture of the site. Shown on the screen is the proposed specific plan amendments and the land use plan that's proposed. As you'll see, the acreage is still the same, 1,157 acres, and the unit count is still the same, 4,387 units. Really, there are two major changes that are being proposed with the specific plan, the first being shifting some residential units, 963 to be exact, from the community portion to the university portion, as well as the second major change being the financing and fee structure that was associated with development for backbone infrastructure and public facilities. And I have a series of slides here, so we're going to walk through what all the changes were, but really, the overall objectives of the specific plan have not substantially changed from what the current approved plan is. Okay, so some residential adjustments, we're balancing our ledger sheet when we moved those 960 units, 63 units, from the community to the university, and on the left here is the approved specific plan, the 2008 specific plan, and on the right of this slide is showing the proposed amendments. The red boxes are showing that we're going from low-density residential to medium-density residential, as well as we're adjusting some high-density residential down to low and medium-density residential. As well as we've adjusted some of the densities for, the residential densities for low and medium, and then we've actually increased the density limitation on the high-density. The second change, or another change that's being proposed, is the way we do affordable housing. On the left, again, is our existing plan, which identified five sites that had moderate and low income, with the university portion providing all of the very low income. The new plan proposes and identifies two sites that would accommodate the community's obligation, and their obligation is 10%, which is consistent with their general plan, for the very low, low, and moderate income units. There's been a few questions on this, and we think that this proposal is more consistent with the specific plans that are in West Placer County to provide the 10% as well as provide the four, four and two as the community property develops out. So the units are being built with the other units, the market rate units, versus leaving all those low, or the, excuse me, leaving all the low and very low as a university There were also some adjustments to the commercial land use designation. It was changed, the location went from University Boulevard and 8th Street, these would be future streets, and is now proposed to be located along Watt Avenue, Santucci, on the eastern edge of the proposed specific plan. They also increased the commercial misuse property, which is adjacent to the university piece by an acre, and added about an acre to the commercial property. The park acreage was also adjusted, and that is consistent with meeting our general plan standard, with shifting of the units, the proposed population for the community went from around 7,500 to 5,500. And so originally, there were five parks being proposed with a C Street landscape median, and now we're proposing three parks with 12 acres of parks. Again, this is still consistent and meets our general plan standards. Public facilities was also adjusted. The fire station, there was a 2.2-acre fire station with a sheriff co-location that was proposed at 8th Street and A Street. It's being relocated to 8th Street and B Street. And also, the co-location of the sheriff has been proposed to be potentially located on the university, and that will really be decided as the university master plan gets approved, in what the university, if they provide police or not, that'll be worked out. And also, they've eliminated a 2.2-acre site that was public, quasi-public, that had opportunities for churches, daycares, and have just proposed the fire station. There were some adjustments to the circulation plan, but overall, the plan is the same, the backwork network remained the same. There was A Street, which is, would have connected Santucci or Watt Avenue to 8th Street, has now been adjusted to potentially be a local street. That'll be decided as more detailed plans come in and develop the streeting and londoning patterns. There was also some roundabouts eliminated at A Street and C Street. And the A Street one, excuse me, was where, again, if that collector does go through, that was proposed to be eliminated, and then C Street is also now identified as a local street, and so the roundabouts were removed there, are proposed to be removed. There was also a slight adjustment to some interim, adding some interim detention onto parcels 24, 23, and 20, and this interim detention will ultimately be located to the west of the university site as development progresses out there and the university comes in and proposes their infrastructure. As I mentioned before, there's an amended and reinstated development agreement that's being proposed with this application. I did want to note that there in the staff report, there were some adjustments between the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and those were detailed out in the staff report, but overall, the changes to the development agreement really are reflecting that update to the financing and fee structures for this plan, to be consistent with the Placer Vineyards specific plan. They're adding a Melrose District for the backbone infrastructure for, for construction and maintenance, and they're also shifting away for how we finance public facilities to, instead of a developer constructing them, that they would pay fees, and then county would ultimately construct the facilities as the fund became available and/or were needed. They've also proposed to add an option to annex into the existing Placer Vineyards Park District, and again, we've updated the affordable housing obligations in the development agreement to be very consistent with the Placer Vineyards, but to provide the construction the 10% obligation, to set the timing with the market rate units, and to provide the requirement for to the affordable housing agreement. With the 2008 approval, there was a comprehensive environmental review, EIR, that was prepared and certified. For this action, we did an addendum, which looked at the previous certified EIR, and then what this project, the changes were being proposed. The addendum is included in your packet. There was also a mitigation monitoring reporting program that has been adopted with this project. Our addendum did determine that there were no substantial changes that would result from those proposed changes with the plan. That means there were no major revisions needed to the previous EIR. There were no change in circumstances that were determined here, and no new information. So we are proposing that no additional environment review beyond what was provided for in the 2008 final certified EIR and the addendum proposed today is needed. During our review, we did determine that some of the mitigation measures that were adopted did need to be adjusted. There was actually four mitigation measures that needed to be adjusted. For the fire station, the original mitigation measure had an 18-month build requirement. We're now proposing, or what's being proposed now, is that there'll be, for the fire service station, the site will be dedicated with the first map, the improvements will be in place when 8th Street is built, and the station, or the station will be added to the regional fire fee program. Then for fire services, there's options that have been added and included. The options include servicing out of the existing Dry Creek Station, or if a Placer Vineyard Station is constructed, it could be served out of that station. There's also an option for an interim service agreement with another jurisdiction or another entity. And also, there is a option that if the county determines the station is needed at the 1,001 building permit, that there's an option to build the station. Again, for the sheriff's service mitigation measure was adjusted, just to reflect that there may be a need with the university, and that'll be determined at the master plan stage. The park acreages were adjusted in the other mitigation measure, and also for cultural resources, we did slightly modify to add a notification requirement, and that was at the request of tribal consultation, which we did conclude, which is under the Senate Bill 18. There are other planning documents that have been provided in your packet, including, again, amendments to development standards, design guidelines, which are consistent with what's being proposed, the changes proposed for the specific plan. There's also information provided in the development agreement about adjustments to the infrastructure plan and providing for a phasing plan, which will be worked on and adopted with the first specific, or excuse me, the tentative maps. Also included, or provided, has been a finance plan, and that is available for review. I did want to note, we did have some public comment that we received recently on this. Three emails were received on May 13th from Larissa Berry, as well as an email from Michael Garabedian, representing the Sierra Club, and Cheryl Burcom sent an email, and also a follow-up email this morning, that should have been included potentially in your packet or provided on your desk. If you have any questions about those comments, I'm happy to answer any of them, but we are here, again, bringing forward the Planning Commission's recommendation, and I'll happily take any questions.
Board members have any questions prior to us opening the public hearing? I have just a couple. When you began your comments, Jennifer, you were talking about access to the site, you mentioned Brewer Road. I, I suppose if you're going out to look at the university part, not the community part, and in particular, the Wetlands part of the university part, you'd go Brewer, but today, is there, are there not surface streets conducted, essentially, or...
No, the, the only way to access the site today on a public road is Brewer Road.
Through Roseville? You can get right up pretty darn close to seeing the property through Roseville on the...
Yeah, Roseville's got the open space out there, so, again, you would have to be on a street from Roseville.
Right.
But not through...
Which, which is how connection to the property will actually be, won't be through Brewer and coming through the Wetlands area.
Right, yes, correct.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on where...
Right, as approved...
We're actually talking about access on the east side, not on the west side, as the primary access to the property.
The primary access when the development starts will be extension of Watt Avenue, Santucci Boulevard.
And, okay, thank you. So the, I've, I've heard talk about the reduction in the number of affordable units, however, what I'm hearing you say is not only is it consistent with the 10% requirement, we, yes, since there are fewer units... requirement, we, yes, since there are fewer units on the community property overall, the ten percent number, by virtue of how numbers work, the ten percent number would be a lower number. However, unlike the board's action in 2008, which simply assumed that the university, when the university got built, was going to meet much of the low and the lower income housing, there's now a build obligation on the community side with this. So we get the assurance of the development of the community, we get the assurance of the building of that affordable housing.
Correct.
And then also, the other concern that was raised in communication was the reduction in parks. However, our parks standard is a standard based on population, not on areas or acres of disturbance. It's based on population, correct?
Correct, based on population, five acre per thousand residents.
And the reduction in the number of residential units is what sets up the reduction in the parks.
Correct.
Those were the only things that I'd heard raised in various letters that I wanted to make sure got addressed. Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jennifer, for your presentation. The only thing, I just have a concern about the sheriff's station. It's been transferred, the obligation has been transferred to the university project. Is that correct?
Well, there's different ways to provide sheriff. I don't, wouldn't say it's been transferred over there. It really depends on what the university user proposes for their sheriff services. A lot of universities, as you may know, have private security. So that obligation of how much space does the county potentially need, or do they, you know, if they have nothing, they might need space. And I know Michelle can answer this probably better than I can, but I'll take my first stab at it. And that, you know, there will also be co-locations and substations in vineyards that could also provide for services in the future. So it really depends on how that master plan is proposed with the university to look at. If the university has its own force, maybe they just serve out of a substation. If they don't have their own force, maybe we do need a substation or a co-location available, an office available for officers there.
So as the community portion begins to build out, there potentially a sheriff's station from Placer Vineyards would take patrol of that area?
I'm just getting confirmation from Michelle, but yes, that is the proposal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wigan.
Just to map onto that, make sure I understand, because a couple of us have had quite a few conversations leading up to this hearing. But our approach, Jennifer, just tell me, I guess, if I'm completely wrong or on the right line. That is, our approach is to provide levels of service for fire protection based on populations, where those populations exist. And what we're doing is, in this, providing flexibility so that those standards are essentially guaranteed, but we're not exactly certain where those facilities might be and how, in fact, they might be delivered in light of not only this project, but projects in close proximity to it. Is that accurate?
I think it's accurate. I mean, the proposed finance plan that is available is the applicant's proposal. And I do believe there might be some areas, like for fire, or excuse me, for sheriff's service, where the standard is a Roseville standard versus the Placer County standard. But to answer questions about that, I would ask them to come up and describe how they develop that system, and also, I would rely on Michelle to come up and answer that question or answer any questions about that.
And so as we go forward, my understanding also is that the standards are very similar, and they're not hugely different. So I'd like to get clarification as to that. And then, as it relates to all of this, I think it's my understanding, Todd, that we're talking about potentially having a workshop in the fall, following one coming up much more soon as it relates to how we do fiscal analysis, as relates to development proposed. But then in the fall, maybe actually drilling down into methodologies so that all, me and all of my colleagues have a better understanding as to how we're trying to address these issues and embrace policy that's understood and consistent.
Yeah, our intent is to have an actual fairly in-depth workshop with you all to get some clarity, because this will be, this is one project, but we have a number of other ones that are going to be coming up, so.
So to that point, I believe that Supervisor Wigan's question was that by participating in the fee program, they are meeting the general plan standards. It's up to the county to figure out how we provide the services, when we construct, where we construct, all that, given that this project will not exist in isolation, that we will have development potentially to the north, to the south, under the conservation plan, that entire area is to be developed. And so simply the recognition that this is not just an island, that there will be additional services provided south and north, and that participation in the fee plan meets their general plan obligation for services.
And, you know, again, I would, at this point, ask for the experts in the financing plan to come up and answer your questions, because
Okay.
I'm land use.
Dave, do we have a fair share obligation being met?
Yeah, so on fire, we have a menu of options to meet the general plan standard. Obviously, construction of a permanent fire station will be done by the county, using fees paid by the applicant. Interim service will be provided either by agreement with another jurisdiction or entity or out of existing fire stations in immediate locality.
So we have a fair share standard that's being
Yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, though, I said your first name. We do need your full name for the record.
Dave DeFanti.
Thank you, Mr. DeFanti.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for staff prior to having the applicant come forward and address our board and perhaps some of these issues? I see no other questions. If the applicant will please come forward. I think you know where you might want to start.
Good morning, Chair Yuler, members of the board, Chad Roberts. I do know where I want to start. I want to thank staff for all their hard work in this project to you today. It's taken a lot to get here this morning, and we just want to recognize all that hard work and say how much we appreciate it. I wanted to address a couple of the written comments you've received. First off, on the affordable housing, Supervisor Yuler, you hit the nail on the head here. I just wanted to share that actually, under the original specific plan on the community property, only one hundred and ninety affordable housing units would have been built under the revised specific plan. We're talking about two hundred and twenty-seven units being built on the community property. So it's actually increased the construction obligation on the project. With respect to services, again, you got to the right place there. Thanks, Dave, for his explanation. Our, we are meeting all the general plan standards, and our desire here is to give the county flexibility in terms of how they actually serve the project. I don't think I have much more to add at this point unless you have questions. Our entire applicant team is here, Julie Hansen, Al Johnson, McKay and Soms, DPFG. So if you have any questions, one of us will be able to answer.
Okay, Dave, what we'll do, seeing no board lights on, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'll just stick around, if there's some questions or comments that are raised during the public hearing. We always give the applicant the opportunity to address the board after the public hearing and clarify anything that might have come up at that point.
I'd appreciate that.
So just stick around.
Thank you.
All right, going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mike Garabedian for Placer Group, Sierra Club. I think that the best way to approach this is with a couple of questions and then a couple of notes about the big changes between the last project and development agreement and current one. So are we getting a university in name only now? Because this looks like this may be able to go ahead without a university? That's a question. The station, the facilities that used, were planned to be built by the developer, and now are going to be built by the county, it appears. The key, the key point we raised in our, is a concern about the future of this. I think a way to put it is, how are you now making these decisions for people a couple decades in the future, based on ten, twenty-year-old ideas of increasing, making traffic congestion impossible, and our feeling that we would hope the developer and the county would be interested in figuring out how to serve this area with rail transit tied into the development as, so we know, starting right now in South County, how the heck are we going to relieve the, are we going to do something to relieve that or just leave it like it is? Are we squashing together a couple of different projects? You know, Placer Vineyards and this one? They didn't show Placer Vineyards on the map, but now we're going to be talking about doing them together. And so the, a key question is, another question, is the county going too far with these changes? Are they basically giving away too much with this current thing, current, the current changes? Now, on the watershed, on the environmental issues, this is, this is in the middle of Curry Creek, almost square in the center, elongated of Curry Creek. And this, this is not a project designed with nature. Why wouldn't the university want to do a project that's designed with nature instead of imposed on it? The Sierra Club, the applicant or someone has made an application to the Regional Water Quality Control Board for their Clean Water Act four oh one water quality certification permit, and the Sierra Club has asked for a hearing on that because of our concern about the wetland issues. So it, can this, they go ahead and defeat the purpose of the university? Would the university want to, when they start construction before the university's built, you know, doesn't this begin to affect what the university could do if they wanted to have this whole project on their own? About, well, I'll comment on affordable housing. There were seventeen hundred units in the community area of high-density and medium-density housing. Those have been eliminated. And now there's, now there's affordable housing in the campus area, which may never be built. It's not mandated, it's not required, is the, anyway, I think that gives you the flavor of our concerns, and we think the changes are so major that this should be sent back to the planning commission for their review and more public input.
So, Mr. Garabedian, may I infer from your comments that you are, number one, representing the Sierra Club, and number two, opposed to the board making these changes today?
We think the wisest thing would be to refer it back to the planning commission because of the major changes.
So you're not in support of the requested changes?
We think it should be referred back to the planning commission for more input. We think you would like to have this, we would hope you would like to have that, so that these questions can be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we will close the public comment, bring it back to the board for additional discussion and action. First of all, anything that the applicant feels compelled to respond to? All right. We're being asked to take a number of actions. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gore, your light is on.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask a question. What is, what's the commitment by the developer to bring the university to the Placer, or excuse me, the regional university specific plan? If you could address that, that would be helpful.
University Development Foundation, which manages the two LLCs that own the separate properties, is a nonprofit corporation dedicated to bringing a university to Placer County. And that's its commitment. There's, there's nothing in the development agreement itself that says we shall bring a university. It is our intent, it is the intent of the specific plan, it's the reason that the entity exists. But certainly, we can't say that it will happen. That is our desire, it's what we're working to, we've been working towards for a long time and continue to work towards.
All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a number of actions requested of us. The first is to adopt a resolution approving an addendum to the Certified Regional University Specific Plan Final Environmental Impact Report and amendments to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Do we have a motion on that action?
Move approval.
We have a motion, Wigan, then the second, that time was Gusterson. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. We are being asked to adopt a resolution approving amendments to Regional University Specific Plan.
Move approval.
We have a motion, Wigan, second, Gusterson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you. We're being asked to adopt an ordinance approving amendments to Regional University Specific Plan Development Standards and Design Guidelines.
Move approval.
Motion, Wigan, second, Gusterson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. And finally, we're being asked to adopt an ordinance approving the amended and restated development agreement by and between the county of Placer and the Placer University Community Property LLC and Placer University Project LLC relative to Regional University Specific Plan. Motion, Wigan, second, Gusterson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a ten-thirty timed item, which it's safe for us to take up now. You might want to give it a moment, Mr. Rososco, and let folks filter out here, including two of my colleagues, it appears. Don't take that personally. I don't think that's a reflection on you.
You have to go a lot deeper than that.
You're way over that, are you?
Oh, way past that point.
We are on Chapter Seventeen Zoning Text Amendment. It is item, or excuse me, page number three twenty-one in our board packets.
Why am I not moving?
You're welcome.
There we go.
You are free to proceed at your leisure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Rososco, Principal Planner for Placer County Planning Services, in charge of current planning. Today is the second installment of the Chapter Seventeen Zoning Text Amendment. As you will remember, I was back with the first installment about, I don't know, two months ago or so. So, just as background, we started this process in 2006, placed on hold due to the economic downturn, restarted in 2017, been working on it since then. This has been presented to all the municipal advisory councils. So what we're proposing today in the second installment is proposed changes to some of the land use definitions, add a definition for highway deficiency report and highway plan. This is actually a document that's been adopted by the board since 1967. This has never been defined in the zoning ordinance, and we're asked to do that by the Engineering and Surveying Division of SEDRA. We are adding a definition for nuisance to coincide with the changes to the nuisance section at the request of code enforcement. We're adding a definition for travel-ready to assist code enforcement in dealing with people who are overstaying our incidental camping regulations. We are updating the definition of structure so that it is compatible with the county building code. We're removing the definition of lot area so that the basis of the size of a lot will be based on gross area, no longer net. We are also proposing amendments to the building height measurement process that we use. Right now, regardless of what we approve as far as a graded pad or not, we are supposed to measure your height from the natural, the previous natural grade. So now, what we are proposing is that if you build on natural grade, we'll measure from natural grade. If you have an approved pad or different grade than the natural grade that was done through an entitlement or a grading permit, that we will measure from that approved grade. We are also asking that you amend the extension of time for administrative review permits, minor use permits, conditional use permits, and variances, so that there's a possibility of six years' worth of extensions that will bring them consistent with what we do for subdivision maps right now. They're allowed six years of extensions. These entitlements are only allowed three. It would be very helpful if they were consistent in nature. We are also modifying the code enforcement process. The proposed amendments pertain to the nuisance, to the collection of nuisance abatement costs, detailing the nuisance abatement hearing procedure, and eliminate the right of appeal to the board of supervisors, so the nuisance abatement process would stop at the planning And that is all that we are proposing with this amendment, and we are asking that you find that the amendment is exempt from SEQA. And the second part is all the code sections that need to be adopted. I'm not going to read those into the record. They're part of the staff report, and they are part of the record. And that is it for now, unless you have any questions.
All right. Board members, have any questions at this point? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Go ahead and open the public hearing to anybody who wants to comment on the Go ahead and open the public hearing to anybody who wants to comment on the proposed changes to Chapter Seventeen and the zoning text amendment prior to the board taking action. Any members of the public wish to address the board? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Being asked to take two actions. Number one, find that the proposed code amendments are exempt under SEQA Guidelines Section fifteen oh six one B three. That was Supervisor Gore, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Supervisor Holmes is the second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. And we are being asked to adopt the ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter Seventeen, the identified sections and subsections that are listed in the staff report, without reading them all. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Gore and second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much, Mr. Rososco. Hey, you battered five hundred today, that's not bad. All right, sorry, a little personal thing. Going to go ahead and move on to our ten forty timed item. Do we have, Mr., there he is, Josh is going to come forward and talk to us about industrial hemp.
Good morning, Josh Hunsinger with the Placer County Agriculture Department, your agricultural commissioner. So, it's a pleasure to be here before you today. So, I'm here to give you a little bit of an update on kind of where, where industrial hemp is from a legal, legal perspective, give you a little bit of a description of exactly what industrial hemp is, and then, due to, I think, some changes in the law and some significant interest that I have received from the public, seek some additional direction from your board on, on how to proceed forward. So, to start out with, industrial hemp recently had some legislation at both the state and federal level to change its legal status. That occurred in, at the state level in two thousand and sixteen via the last chapter of Proposition Sixty-four. As you may be aware, Proposition Sixty-four was the recreational marijuana initiative that passed in California in two thousand and sixteen. However, the last chapter also addressed industrial hemp separately from recreational marijuana. More recently, in December of two thousand and eighteen, the two thousand and eighteen Federal Farm Bill was signed into law, and that also had some significant language regarding legalizing industrial hemp at the federal level. There's still some kind of harmonization and steps to bring the state program into compliance with federal law that I'll talk about, but that is, that is moving forward. Currently, our county ordinance prohibits all cannabis cultivation, including hemp, based on our analysis of the county code, and so, want to bring that to your attention, and so, I will jump into it. So, what industrial hemp is, and this is the state definition found in the California Health and Safety Code, which is actually part of the California Controlled Substances Act. Industrial hemp means a crop that is limited types of the plant, cannabis sativa L, having no more than three tenths of one percent, I'll give it a moral here, tetrahydrocannabinol, THC content, contained in the dried flowering tops. So, THC is the psychoactive compound in marijuana that is, you know, quote unquote, gets people high. To contrast with that, three tenths of one percent, traditional marijuana, I'm told, has a THC content around eighteen to twenty percent, so it's, it's, it's orders of magnitude different. However, the cannabis sativa L is the same species of plant, industrial hemp and marijuana are the same species of plant, and so, that is, you know, one of the reasons why this issue is somewhat complex. Industrial hemp has a number of different uses. These are current uses, and I will mention that the, that industrial hemp or hemp products are not currently and have for quite some time been legal, or they're, they're not currently prohibited and have been legal for quite some time in the United States. There's, there's three kind of buckets that I would generally categorize hemp products in. The first one is fiber uses, and those would be, you know, traditionally, we think of hemp rope prior to, you know, nylon rope being available. You know, our, our sailing ships were all, you know, had a significant amount of rope on them, that was all hemp rope, you know, maybe the hemp proponents will tell you, George Washington grew hemp, you know, back in the day. So, that, that's one, kind of cordage is one use. Clothing is another one that's, that's gaining in popularity. I know the Patagonia Clothing Company, for instance, has a whole line of hemp clothing, for instance. And then, building materials is another type of use for hemp fibers. The fibers are extremely strong, that's why they've traditionally been used, and so, like hempcrete, there is a, you know, is, is an example of a building material that would be concrete impregnated with hemp fibers to strengthen it. The second kind of bucket of hemp uses is food products, and this is another one where these are products that are hemp meal, or portions of the hemp plant, or hemp seed that is used, it's high in protein and has some other aspects. You can think of like hemp milk, similar to almond milk, which comes, for instance. And then, the third category is CBD products, which are extremely popular right now, and these are products that contain CBD, which is purported to have some potential medicinal properties. It's, it's derived from the oil extracted from the female flowers of the plant, and however, the, the legality of CBD contain, products that contain CBD is somewhat murky. FDA and California Department of Public Health have not sanctioned the use in food products or cosmetics or something like that. Regardless of the legal status, the products, CBD products are widely available throughout the United States, including here in Placer County. I will note that approximately a week ago, our Placer County Environmental Health Department did send out a guidance letter regarding the use of CBD in food products, and basically stated that the use of CBD products in food is prohibited, and so, I believe that, that guidance letter was attached in your staff report. So, to jump over to cultivation, this, this photo shows an example of what traditional kind of fiber and seed production hemp looks like. It's, it's, you know, narrow stalks, densely planted crop, typically mechanically harvested like you would think of with corn or wheat or something like that. It very much looks like a traditional agricultural type of crop. I want to contrast that with, you know, what you would expect with CBD hemp, and it's much different. It's tended on an individual plant basis. The plants are typically all female plants. As you may be aware, hemp or cannabis plants come in either a female plant or a male plant, and when the, when the, when the plants pollinate, then they produce seed, and so, if you're going after female flowers and oil extraction, whether it's for traditional marijuana or for CBD hemp, you don't want any pollination going on, you want just the female plant. So, this would be typically what you expect with a CBD-type cultivation scenario where it's all female plants, they're tended on an individual plant basis for flower production. So, to begin with the regulatory history, and this is in a broad, a national sense, cultivation of hemp was unregulated prior to nineteen thirty-seven. In nineteen thirty-seven, there was a tax act that was passed requiring actually hemp growers to register with the IRS, of all things. Hemp was already kind of, hemp cultivation in the United States was already in the decline at that point, although World War Two kind of revived it. There was a number of needs for hemp during World War Two, as you can imagine. However, the kind of decline continued up until the nineteen seventy Controlled Substances Act, which prohibited cultivation of all forms of cannabis sativa, including industrial hemp, so that, that kind of brought to an end any cannabis cultivation, including industrial hemp production in the United States. Jumping forward, in nineteen ninety-eight, some law in Canada was actually changed to encourage hemp cultivation, and that led to increased importation of hemp products, which were excluded from the controls, the Federal Controlled Substances Act, and so, a number of fiber products, clothing, different fiber products, as well as some of the hemp food products, like the hemp protein food products, continued to be imported in the United States. Customs and Border Protection sanctioned that, however, the DEA intervened to the extent that the, the U.S. Hemp Industry Association sued the DEA and got a favorable ruling, which further solidified those importations of Canadian hemp into the U.S. market, to the extent that today, I understand, we import over a billion dollars' worth of hemp products in the United States from Canada. Jumping ten years forward, in two thousand and thirteen, California Legislature passed SB five sixty-six that was signed into law, which created kind of a, a regulatory structure for hemp pilot programs in California. However, that law really never came into practice, it was never enacted. There were some, some caveats or some holdback criteria in that law pending federal action. In two thousand and fourteen, the Federal Farm Bill, the two thousand and fourteen Farm Bill was approved by Congress and signed by the President that allowed for hemp pilot programs as well as hemp research to occur, and that resulted in approximately thirty thousand acres of hemp cultivated in the United States at that point, Kentucky being the leading state in hemp cultivation, followed by, as I mentioned, two thousand and sixteen, the last chapter of Proposition Sixty-four, then moved forward California's program and set, set California on a path towards commercial hemp cultivation. And lastly, and possibly most significantly, the two thousand and eighteen Farm Bill, which I just mentioned, fully removed industrial hemp from the Controlled Substances Act, put it under the United States Department of Agriculture for regulation, allowed for crop insurance, and a number of other things. What is important to note is that the Federal Farm Bill, while it took some significant action, there's still pending regulations that need to be developed, and then each state is required to submit their own hemp regulation plan to USDA for approval prior to that state having a fully federally sanctioned hemp cultivation and hemp regulation program within their state. So, there's several more steps that need to occur before California has a fully federally compliant hemp cultivation program, and so, we estimate it'll probably take the remainder of two thousand and nineteen for California to, to reach that status. At the, just to expand on California law a little more, some of the things that are required, so, so hemp is regulated under Division Twenty-four of the California Food and Agriculture Code. It sets up the Agricultural Commissioner as the lead regulatory agent for industrial hemp at the local level, creates a regulatory role, including receiving registrations and collecting registration fees from growers. Those growers also have to submit the location of each hemp cultivation site. There is a pre-harvest THC content testing requirement, so within thirty days prior to harvest, each grower has to have their crop tested for THC content, and then if it exceeds that three tenths of one percent threshold, the grower is then obligated to destroy their crop. I think there's some significant concerns with that crop destruction, everything from, you know, the ability to obtain federal crop insurance so that growers aren't bankrupted by a single failed crop, to just the county's obligation to ensure that the grower follows through with mandated crop destruction, and what our remedies are if the grower is resistant to that. There's a whole host of concerns there. As far as county ordinance goes, what we have currently in our Chapter Seventeen land use definitions, there's, there's two definitions of particular note, both crop production and agricultural processing, including, include language that says, "Does not include cannabis sativa L." So, back in two thousand and ten, our board proactively excluded cannabis sativa L from being considered a crop or considered eligible for crop production, and if you go back and read that staff report at that time, it was clearly directed towards medical marijuana, but because it's the same species of plant, it is also, in effect, prohibited hemp cultivation from being considered a legal type of crop cultivation under our, our existing land use code. More recently, in two thousand and sixteen, your board took action to, regarding commercial cannabis or commercial marijuana, and within the definitions in Chapter Eight of our code concerning cannabis, the board specifically excluded industrial hemp from the definition of cannabis, and that was a kind of a proactive exclusion to ensure that we did not, no pun intended, rope hemp into the definition of cannabis, and with the, with the accompanying prohibitions on cannabis cultivation. So, in, in analyzing the situation, and to the best of our ability, we've identified a few potential concerns regarding industrial hemp. The first would be nuisance odor complaints. I think everybody is aware of, you know, just in the limited experience we have with marijuana cultivation in the county, aware of some of the odor issues that can arise. We've had experience with, with marijuana or cannabis at a relatively small scale, maybe fifty or a hundred plants at most in a, in an extreme situation. I think on an industrial agricultural scale, we could be looking at hundreds of acres of hemp, should we move forward in that direction as a county, and so, there's a potential to really, for, for odor concerns. I have made arrangements personally with a grower in another county that is, is moving forward with hemp cultivation this year to get some firsthand experience and just see exactly where those concerns lie, but I don't have any firsthand experience to date on exactly how bad the nuisance odor concern is. Also reached out to Air Pollution Control District, I'll be working with them on this issue as well. The second concern we've identified is, is the potential for pollen drift. While we've, we've prohibited commercial cannabis cultivation in Placer County, we still, you know, as mandated by Proposition Sixty-four, allow up to six plants to be cultivated per household for personal use, and there is a potential for hemp pollen drift to render that personal cannabis unusable to the, the person that's growing it, and that is, I think, is a concern to some people. Lastly, if you refer back to the, the photo I showed, as far as CBD hemp in particular, but hemp in general, there is a potential to conceal illicit cannabis cultivation within an industrial hemp grow. I don't know how big that concern is in, in practice, but even with THC testing requirements, I think it's all about whether you luck into testing the right plants or not in some circumstances. They look very similar, they are the same species of plant. Another item of note is the established research institutions. Federal and state law are different on this point. Federal law requires any authorized research to be done in conjunction with an accredited university, as defined by the Education Code. State law does not have that same requirement. To paraphrase, it's basically any entity that does research is, is authorized, and so, that's a, that's a significant difference between state and federal law at the moment. Why these research cultivation types are of some concern is that there is no county registration requirement for them, there are no testing requirements, the THC limitations are not there, and there's, at least in state law, there's no final disposition requirement for research hemp, and so, there's just a lot less rules around it, and the potential, especially following the state rules, is for, for things to be a little squarely, that's a technical term there, so, sorry. So, finally, in conclusion, I'd like to just, it'd be helpful to have some, some direction from your board as to move, move forward and how you'd like to move forward. While we do have a prohibition at the moment, it's, it's not a particularly strong or deliberate prohibition, so, you know, one thing to be consider if that is the direction your board wants to go, there might, it might warrant additional language to strengthen that prohibition. Another alternative just to consider would be to maintain the current status quo until the state and federal programs are harmonized, and California has a fully, a fully federally compliant program, which I estimate would be a two thousand and twenty growing season at best. It's, it's not going to be a two thousand and nineteen growing season. Or, should your board direct, I think we could at least investigate what it would take to get something up and running potentially for a two thousand and nineteen growing season if there's really a sense of urgency, although I think that would be a real challenge, depending on how comprehensive a set of regulations you would want to accompany that, that type of scenario. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over. I'm happy to answer any questions you have as best as I can, and we'll look forward to your direction.
Great, thank you, Josh, very much. Any questions, supervisors? Mr. Wigan?
Josh, so, if we had a willingness
Josh, so if we had a willingness to consider the industrial cultivation of hemp and separate that clearly and distinctly from marijuana use, would we then approach it, probably a question for Karen as well, but would we then define industrial hemp as having, containing less than three-tenths of 1% of THC in the flower, and then provide a pathway by which that would then be, I'm assuming you would then follow that it should be grown only in ag zoning, like looking for compatibility issues as it relates to something like a turkey ranch or dairy, so that you would be in a place that was compatible for that setting?
Yeah, so to answer the first part of your question, and I'll defer to Karen if she has additional input, obviously, but I think what we do a lot of times in our county ordinance is refer to specific state laws. So the state has a definition, which is, I believe, also consistent with the federal definition of hemp. Our current county ordinance doesn't make a distinction. It just prohibits a species of plant. So we could, you know, theoretically change that definition to reflect the nuance within the species of plant, if you will. To the second point, I would say that we allow crop production in a wide range of different zone districts as well as on some very small parcels. So something I would encourage you to consider would be just when you get down into, for instance, residential agricultural zoning, which has kind of that dual preference for both residential use and agricultural use, and you commonly have parcels down to, say, 2.3 acres in size, for instance. I would just, you know, that would be one of the things I would personally, you know, look at, is that an appropriate place if we just throw the door open and call it crop production? That would be, you know, one of the concerns I would have personally.
Thanks.
To answer your question about the zoning regs, there are two definitions which prohibit, as Josh was mentioning, anything related to medical marijuana, including cultivation. And the use tables under 1706-050 also prohibit that land use in every category. So if the board did want to allow industrial hemp, it would require us to reopen our zoning code and revise it, and bear in mind that's also subject to CEQA. So it certainly can be done. It's not a small task, and we'd have to walk through it as to what would be practical and definitions that we could actually enforce. I'd also point out, I did a little polling in various other counties, because we're not the only county with this question in mind, and many of the counties that currently have the prohibitions, such as we have, including Nevada County, are holding off and doing anything until the state regulations are in place, just see how those pan out, and then being able to provide the local regulations if that is the desire. Not to say you couldn't start with the zoning code revisions right here and now, however, I'm not quite sure, absent the state regs, how we're going to enforce whether it is industrial hemp versus the marijuana. Not an expert, but that might be a little difficult.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Josh. Have you had any inquiries from any members of the agricultural community that are interested in beginning the production of hemp?
Yes, that's largely what has prompted my interest to come before your board, is I've, you know, ever since 2018, late 2018, when the farm bill passed, that generated a lot of interest, and ever since then, I've been getting multiple calls a week from people who are interested in cultivating hemp.
And in order for it to be feasible, how many acres do you think a grower would need to make it financially feasible?
Josh, that's hard to say. I would be speculative on my part, just because it is such a new thing, and we don't have a lot of history with the crop here in California. I couldn't say.
All right, okay. Well, I understand the alternatives that we have, and it seems like it's probably the better part of wisdom to go with number two, to maintain the current prohibition. But if there's people excited about beginning production of hemp, it might be wise to move, to look to number three, to kind of tee it up. So we're, when the state finally figures out what they're going to do, tee it up so we're ready to go, instead of having to go through all the challenges of changing ordinances and everything. That's just kind of my thought right now.
Okay. Would inform the public and my colleagues that though this is not a public hearing, I do intend to open it up for public comment if any members of the public do want to address the board on this item. Supervisor Gustafson?
Thanks, Josh, for the briefing, previous to this meeting. And as I shared with Josh, my grandfather was paid by the federal government to grow hemp in Minnesota during World War II for ropes, for parachutes, so had a little bit of background there, but no other background there.
So is that a conflict of interest that will require recusal? Is that what that is?
Yeah, but I did want to talk, no.
Correct.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Sure you don't want to get counsel opinion on that?
Yeah. Cost of inspections and enforcement, I think that is a critical piece of this, and, you know, I think I would lean toward two as, or number three, and wait for the state to take the lead on this. I think there's a lot of issues entwined here, but, you know, can we pass along those costs of enforcement inspections that it would be required to know which, what it was growing?
Yeah, so the state law absolutely authorizes each county to recover, full cost recovery on this program. That's specifically authorized by state law. So that would be part of, you know, should your board choose to move forward with something, we would have to analyze what all is involved in implementing this program.
How many inspections, and it could be, especially if there was a lot of, you know, in smaller parcels or those sorts of things, so.
Yes.
Okay, counsel wanted to chime in on that?
Yeah, only to mention that that's one thing that the other counties were also noting is waiting until the state regs, and also getting in place a fee structure for those inspections and for any registration that's required, licensing and that sort of thing. You have it all in place at the time that you start allowing it.
Do you have any opinion on the World War II industrial activities and how that?
No, I don't think so.
Just thought to check. Supervisor Corr.
Thank you, Josh, for the update. I think that there might be some interest in industrial hemp in our community in growing it, but there are concerns, right, like you mentioned, odor, and I think there's a lot of maybe non-information about the differences between marijuana and hemp. And I think that it would be really important for us to start informing the community when we get to this place that there's interest in the board changing our codes and our allowances of this, you know, if we choose to move that way, because I don't want people to come to us saying, "You're not listening," and we just pass something sort of in the dark of night and have our, you know, our cities, our residents be uninformed. So I think that's really important. I would move towards number two and sort of wait until we find out what the state regulations are, and then we can move from there, while at the same time letting folks know that we're going to look at considering this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Weigand?
Yeah, just asked a couple of questions. I'll give you my direction or preferences. If I personally still don't support anything that would enhance opportunities for recreational marijuana use, industrial hemp is something that I think I'd like you to research and keep a surprise and start public outreach regarding, because it could be another viable agricultural crop. I would recommend thinking of it in terms of something like a dairy or a turkey, but as you learn more, we'll know more. But we have places for that, and that's fine and viable, but there's differences to how we write it down in our ordinance and then enforce it.
Yep. All right, seeing no more lights, I am going to go ahead and accept public comment if anybody wishes to address the board on this item. Feel free to step forward at this time and identify yourself. Not a lot of public comment at this time, so your outreach needs to begin. So a couple of questions. First of all, I thought it interesting that you identified Kentucky as having the jump start on industrial hemp cultivation. That, I guess, answers my question as to why Mitch McConnell was so hell-bent on making sure it was in the ag bill.
Yes.
Yeah, that kind of rounds that one out for me.
Yes.
Textiles, you mentioned textiles. Are there any in particular, shirts, socks, that might be?
Yeah, you know, my understanding is...
You don't have any socks that are of this product? Sorry?
I don't know what you're talking about.
I was told to ask the question. Okay.
For all the audience, okay.
Um, yeah.
It was a dare from E.J. Evaldi.
Yeah, well, then you might know where the question came from.
Yes.
So the questions that I do have, though, given that we do have states like Kentucky, heavy agriculture states that are now embracing this, what, is this a crop that supplants existing crops? If so, what kinds of crops typically get supplanted? In other words, farmers stop farming X in order to grow hemp? I'd be curious to know what that is. Climate, soils, all the rest, we are suitable within certain strata of our county as opposed to parts that aren't? Water requirements, what are the water requirements for this as an agricultural crop, given the density of its concentration that you showed in that slide? What are the water requirements of this versus our traditional crops in this county like rice and almonds and those kinds of things? So looking at it, and has it been the experience in some of these other states or areas where you're taking ground that is not currently in agricultural production, and it's coming into agricultural production as opposed to just supplanting something else? So are we seeing an overall, by embracing industrial hemp, are we seeing an overall expansion of the agricultural pie as opposed to just a redivision of that agricultural pie? So those are some of the questions that I have as we contemplate this going forward. I'm also very curious to start looking, I'm less interested in it from the agricultural side, meaning the economic development opportunities associated with the agricultural side, and more with the manufacturing side. So what exists today by way of a manufacturing infrastructure, and read that also to mean, what does the absence of an existing manufacturing infrastructure mean to us from an opportunity standpoint in our industrial area or other areas? And so that also then reads to, as you've heard a number of concerns expressed by my colleagues, about the odor of it growing and all the rest. At what point does that diminish and it's been encased? And so if I have an industrial operation that is processing hemp into concrete or your socks, what are the ancillary impacts of odors in the processing? Do we have, does it spill over? So I'm very much looking at it from the standpoint of the state will figure it out, what the regulations are going to be. Our board has already taken a very firm stand that we've heard reiterated here today, that we have no interest in talking about the consumable marijuanas, but simply something that can be used as an ingredient in various manufacturing endeavors. And so what are the implications of going from seeds in the ground to produced product going out the door and into stores? And if we are an early adopter in that space, what from an economic development standpoint does that mean to our county? So that's the way that I'm kind of looking at this.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha. Any other questions or comments by my board members? I don't see any. I think that if I were to have to point at one of them, I think you heard, I'm looking at number three, the third bullet down, that obviously want to maintain the current prohibitions, but obviously start looking at what can this mean.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right.
Given the faces in the room, I'm going to take these things out of order. We're going to jump over our 11:10 timed item and go to our 11:30 timed item on the Housing Stakeholders Group findings, because I know there are a number of people here that are interested in that particular item, and hopefully let you get on your way.
Good morning, still. Steve Fedretti, Director of the Community Development Resource Agency. We're here to present the results of the Housing Stakeholder Group meetings that we held earlier in January and February. It's really a progress report. As you may recall, last November, we had an INLU fee presentation where the staff made some recommendations, and the board asked us to create a stakeholder group and to seek some kind of agreement on an overall strategy on providing affordable housing. We created that group. We had stakeholders, including housing advocates, builders, developers, realtors, homeless advocates, apartment owners, and others. And I want to note that in using affordable, I'm using it generically for attainable, achievable workforce, affordable, with all those, all the different types of affordable housing. So we held the four meetings back in January and February. We did obtain some general consensus on a number of things, and I want to say it's a general consensus, not everybody agreed to everything. However, we did come up with what I'm calling an overarching strategy on how we move forward. We agreed on some general principles, or guiding principles, which are statements of fact or conclusions that we came to. Then we have a strategy, general goals on moving forward, and potential specific solutions. Now, those really is a laundry list of specific actions.
I'm going to interrupt you just to point out that your slides aren't keeping pace with your presentation. I think you're...
They rarely do because I don't pay attention.
I think you're probably on about the third slide at this point, where you're talking about your overarching strategy and the guiding principles and those things.
Well, I was...
That's about where you were.
Yes, pretty enthralled with what I was saying, I guess, so I didn't feel we needed that.
I get that. I get accused of that often.
Of being enthralled with what I'm saying?
No, with what I say.
Okay.
Rest assured, you wouldn't confuse the two.
Awesome. All right. So with all the disclaimers, that not everybody agrees to every single thing, but we do agree in general. Let's see, let's go back. Well, we did, I guess I already talked about all of those, and we'll move on. We did not really talk about the INLU fee a whole lot during these. What we recognize, I think, is that the INLU fee, as we proposed last November, really doesn't affect very many projects. There were really only two projects over the past six years, I think, that were impacted by that policy. And so by delaying a little while while we are continuing to work on a case-by-case basis until we can come to these final solutions, I don't think it's going to be a horrible impact to all of us. We did agree to reconvene the stakeholder group. What we really need now is to come up with a financing strategy, and I had said at the White Hawk hearing recently, which is one of those two cases in the INLU fee discussion, that we would come back with a financing strategy by the end of the year. Pretty much everybody has said that's too long, and so they've asked that we go a little bit quicker than that. We met with the stakeholder group last Friday, and they were very adamant they'd like to move quickly. They asked that rather than hashing out, trying to hash out some kind of a strategy on the funding side, that county staff make a proposal and get that out to everyone, which we've roughed out that. I want to put it into a better format, and following all the logic that we had through the guiding principles and the strategy and the solutions, so that we can make it coherent, and then we can let everybody start discussing and arguing about what's the best path forward. So the overarching strategy, what is it? I'm not going to read all of these, there's way too much to go through. But these are intended to be very high-level overarching statements of fact or conclusions that the stakeholder group shares. They're pretty simple for the most part. Placer County has an affordability crisis. There's a lack of housing. A lack of housing affects the economy and the long-term well-being of the county. There are no easy solutions, and therefore innovative solutions are required. And when you have innovative solutions, they're probably going to be unsettling to someone. But the impact of not having affordable housing may be worse than the impact of any discreet issue. Now, I want to point out, Placer County Association of Realtors could not be here today. They had sent us some comments on this. They did not like this one in particular. They don't, they feel it's provocative to say that the negative impacts of a, to a single group are not worthy of consideration. I understand that, and I think what we're looking at is to try to find the right balance, where I think everyone, hopefully, would be equally impacted. Want to increase the housing supply, increasing the housing supply tends to keep costs down. We also agree that no single sector, and I think it's keys, no single sector of the community is responsible for the affordability crisis, and therefore, any solutions and costs should be borne by all sectors of society, in this case, not just the builders. It could be non-residential, it could be the county as a representative of the community as a whole, state and federal funding is appropriate to have in. So there are a number of things that I think could be included.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could you go back to slide number seven?
Sure.
I don't understand what, we're talking about the conversion of non- I don't understand what, we're talking about the conversion of non-marketable commercial stock. Can you help me understand what?
Yes.
Would that be an old Kmart store or something like that? Is that-
I think so. Want to jump in?
That was an interest by a number of the participants in the stakeholder group was to be able to look at non-marketable structures, industrial, commercial, and do the conversion. So, example like Rockland is looking at is the conversion of the former Wal-, I think it was Walmart, or Kmart, sorry, Kmart store into some potential affordable housing.
Would that necessitate the change in zoning? Do you allow that?
Currently under our zoning, residential or multifamily is allowed within commercial zones.
Okay, thank you.
Right, there was a lot of interest. That's one thing I didn't have when I started this was the creative reuse of existing buildings, whether residential or non-residential. So, that was an important add-on. Let's see, where am I? The, pretty simply, we talked about it's not caused by a single factor or a single sector and should not be, the cost should not be borne. By definition, it's, we need to reduce costs or find new funding. That's pretty simple to understand. Reducing the regulatory burden by creating buy right development that has affordability by design is one way to reduce costs. Encouraging the creative reuse of existing buildings is another. We also have a goal to try to make moderate price housing achievable through market rate construction. So, we're relatively close, if we believe some of the studies that we have, but if we can get market rate to be built at cost, that is really a goal that we have. Now, low and very low, I think we have to recognize that those need to be at least partially subsidized in some way for us to be able to get there. It's just not going to happen through market rate. Timelines is just saying that we have, the goal is to provide as much short-term affordable housing as we can, but we have to recognize that a lot of the immediate actions that we're taking are really setting the stage for, setting the foundation for what's going to happen in the future. And so, it's not all going to happen right away, although we do have some things underway The overall strategy follows those lines. Increase the amount of housing being constructed. Increase the mix of housing types. Comply with state laws, the new state laws. And then, let's implement our existing general plan policies, many of which we haven't had, haven't implemented. We haven't had staff and resources to do that over the years. We need to adopt new general plans, zoning ordinance, development guidelines, a number of things. Those are already underway. We've written a number of those and we have the contract that your board approved recently with ICF to start working on an environmental review of that, and we hope to bring that early next year. Oh, and another important one is advocating for revisions to state laws. There are a lot of those going on right now. We have been fairly active. Shawna sent in comments to the governor's office that were, they actually liked a lot. They sent them around to the entire state and said, this is the format, this is the kind of thing that we're looking for. So, that was, I thought, was really good. So, we're trying our best to get involved and impact that how we can. We want to consider fee waivers or fee deferrals, and we really want to look at changing fees to a per-square-foot basis so that smaller homes pay less fees and hopefully makes them less or more affordable. We want to use public lands for housing. We're already doing that with Placer Government Center. We're also looking at whatever funding sources, finding funding sources long-term that will help subsidize the low and very low. And again, using the existing housing stock for adaptive reuse. Finding solutions, we have a lot of solutions. I don't know that I want to go through all those, given that we're running a little bit late, so I'm not going to do that. There are four categories of costs, and we may have talked about this before. When you look at residential, I mean, the percentage of cost for the development for the, per house, it varies from project to project. In general, it's around, I'm going to say, you know, round numbers. Land is about 15% of the cost. The construction materials labor is about 55%. It varies 50, 60%. The, and about 15% also for the fees that are charged for a house. Another 15% for other costs, whether the regulatory, the processing, the carry cost financing. And so, that's gives approximately where it is. And so, we can have those kinds of impacts. We don't have a lot of impact on the construction cost, on labor costs necessarily. Where we can, we're going to try to do that. I'm not going to read through all these because there's a lot of them. Well, these also were just a compendium of things that we might do. They're not things that we will necessarily do, and I think not everybody agreed that every one of these worked. And so, I'm passing through those. Everybody's got a copy. So, where are we at? Next steps. First, the county is going to continue our efforts on seeking grant and other funding opportunities. We're successful with the Shavers Mill, the $60 million grant, working with privates and others last year. We're going to continue processing the revisions that we've already put together on the general plan zoning ordinance. We will implement expedited permitting streamlining processes. We'll continue to do that where we can. We will support the housing projects that are underway, Mercy Housing, Placer Vineyards, there's some 400 units. We've been working with some of the developers there on, coming up with some innovative ways, unique ways to assure that we get housing, affordable housing built. The 104 housing opportunity sites, these are multifamily sites that we've identified as potentially being available for construction. They make sense to build. Shawna sent out letters to all 104. We got calls back from 26 of the property numbers who are actually interested in perhaps building a duplex or a quad or some other type of multifamily. We need to follow up on those, see if we can't find ways to help with the funding and get those underway. Future efforts, exploring the alternative innovative solutions. I think we've talked about the deed restrictions, similar to veiling deed. We've discussed that. Acquiring existing structures that can be adapted or repurposed. Encouraging increased occupancy of existing single-family residences through home sharing or other, other methods. And of course, utilizing county, county property. And the big one is going to be seeking the permanent funding sources. That's where we're coming back. We have an investment strategy that we will, we have a study, I'm sorry, that has been completed now, will be bringing to the board next month on financial study and trying to figure out what are the funding sources we could use for a long-term. We'll be bringing that to the board, and as I said, we'll be meeting with the stakeholder group very quickly, very soon, and making those recommendations, and then we'll bounce it off them and see where we end up. And with that, I'll leave it open, any questions you might have.
Supervisor Holmes left his light on, but I don't think he has a question right now. Anybody, well, he might, but it doesn't have to do with this. Anybody else have any questions? Supervisor Gustafson.
Yes, thanks, Steve. I believe that when you talked about market rate and getting close on market rate does not include the East Slope, right?
Does not include the East.
We're not, we're pretty far away from having market rate on-
Very close on the West.
And I'm sorry-
Far away on the East.
Yeah.
This effort was really focused on the West, on West Placer. We've got the mountain housing council and other efforts up in the East Placer.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that very clear.
I appreciate you doing that because I forgot to mention-
We're not close.
No, we're not.
And that was, do you have any question?
That was none.
Okay. Well, this is just a presentation for information. However, our board is never reticent to provide any kind of thoughts or directions, but prior to doing so, want to see what folks in the audience might think at this point. So, we're going to go ahead and open for public comment. Anybody in the public wish to address the board on what you've heard or perhaps what you didn't hear? This would be the time to address the board.
Yes, Mike Garbedian, Placer Group Sierra Club. Just want to note that at one of the big housing workshops last year, I asked the question, how many people are moving out of the county? It seems that it's known, but they may not have known at that time. So, at a meeting, a little bit later, at a MAC meeting, I asked again, and I was told, quote, "It's on my desk." Now, I don't know why, if nobody wants to talk about how many people are moving out. I think it's important to know how many and why they're moving out because one thing that should be considered is if there are ways we can help people. They may have temporary problems. There actually may be county services that are helping people stay a little bit, but anyway, I want to add that to the discussion.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Hi, good morning. Will Taylor. I'm a systems change advocate at Placer Independent Resource Services and the co-chair of Placer Consortium on Homelessness. Welcome to our new member. Just wanted to kind of briefly go over this. On October 9th, Mr. Pedretti, Ms. Purvines, Principal Planner of the Planning Services Division, came before this board, asked the board to consider establishing the Western Placer County Affordable Workforce Housing Fee. This is October 6th, October 9th, excuse me. On November 6th, they returned to the board to receive direction on affordable workforce housing fee options. Now, in 2016, the county spent $100,000 to do a NEXUS study to establish the maximum justifiable fee that can be charged in lieu of building. When that study expired in 2018, the county spent many thousands of dollars more to update it. Now, that money's not being used, that those funds are being used. Even after delaying for two years and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, this board refused to act on the recommendations proposed by the NEXUS study or the staff of the Community Development Resource Agency. Instead of taking action on the request to establish a fee structure or to require developers to build, this board chose to delay the decision by convening a stakeholder group for the purpose of obtaining agreement on an overall strategy for providing affordable housing in Western Placer County. This group did not address the issue of INLU fees at all. Instead, it focused on funding solutions and barriers to building affordable housing. And what we discovered is that there are plenty of ways forward to get affordable housing built, including financing opportunities such as county fee reductions, state and federal tax incentives, and new grants from the state and federal. Now, even so, developers don't want to build affordable workforce housing. One of the developers explicitly stated that they don't want to build affordable workforce housing. They said that in our meeting. They don't want to build, it cuts into their profit margins. And unless they're required to build affordable workforce housing, they won't. They've proven that. In Roseville, there is a policy that requires developers to build affordable workforce units. Roseville's an inclusionary group of works. You're missing the part, Jim. It's time to do that here. We need the same kind of policy here. In October and November of last year, staff recommended, consistent with housing element policy B13, no fee option for specific plans in larger general plan amendment projects, no fee. These should be required to construct affordable housing units as the planned areas have sufficient acreage to make it feasible. Now, peers in the Placer Consortium on Homelessness supports this. Without a policy requiring developers to build, no affordable units will be built, as we've seen, they haven't been built. With the funding opportunities that the governor is proposing in his new budget, as well as fee reductions proposed by community development and various tax incentives, there will be plenty of finances available to make these projects pencil out. There is no excuse not to build. Developers need to be held accountable and required to build affordable workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer then. My name's Annette Tomlin. Some people ask me why I advocate for affordable housing. I explain to them my own personal journey, as well as my experiences in a homeless shelter. I've had the honor of meeting many people, many good people, in my situation that I've been going through. People of Placer County deserve affordable housing. We need to go with a housing-first policy that has gained so much popularity in many communities across the U.S. The approach being taken now seems backwards as it criminalizes homeless behavior in hopes of deterring it. Incarceration or sending people through countless court dates ends up being more expensive than paying for housing. You know, this isn't really about loopholes and profits. It's about human beings and their lives within this county. I fully understand developers, 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 sorry, are able to make greater profit from building commercial and residential developments. As we know, inclusionary policies seek to capture a portion of the higher value by requiring that developers include affordable housing in their developments. I think we should make it easier for developers, developers to get affordable plans approved faster with reduced fees. You know, this is how government and industry can partner up together for solutions that actually build. You know, let's end the practice of collecting fees instead of requiring inclusions of affordable units in new developments. We've seen this be successful to bring up Roseville again, in Roseville, you know, with positive outcomes. Roseville was named among the safest cities in the U.S. I want to use this example to show the positive, positive effect of affordable housing within a community. I mean, you know, right now, in reference to Auburn, what we're looking at is, you know, a homeless situation that will obviously increase. Right now, according to the FBI crime data, Auburn has a crime rate that is higher than 60% of the states and towns of all different sizes. I would like to ask that you pass an exclusionary policy. Let's not waste any more time on meetings and studies. The solution truly is clear. We need to require, require developers to build. You know, I think we're looking at it in a way of humanity at a certain point and actually looking, like I said, at the good people within this county. And once again, they truly do deserve affordable housing. Do keep in mind, I understand the difficulties that go along with this, but I do know that the council here can definitely make a positive, you know, positive impact in reference to, you know, going within this direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to address the board on this? Not typically a group that's shy in terms of getting up and commenting.
I'm Reverend Carol Carter from Placer People of Faith Together. Our organization supports the building of affordable housing in this county any way and every way that can happen. We've been at the stakeholders meetings. It's clear there's not consensus because builders have one interest, and the people of the community who struggle to get housing and those people who support them in nonprofits feel differently and understand that this whole county, all the people are important, not just the wealthy. And the developers have made tons of money in this county. Is that not true? I mean, I don't have the numbers, but I believe that's true. And there are a whole lot of other people who can barely get food each month and very dip, pay a very high portion of what income they get for their housing. So, it's very, very important to people of faith and to other people who have no faith at all, that people be cared for in this community in a humane way and that there be a way to build housing. So, we're completely supportive of any action that you all good people might take on our behalf to make sure that builders build the affordable housing that's required by law, at least. If we're only talking about that minimum, that 10%, we're still probably not getting to the full breadth of this problem. So, please consider, this is a first step to do the 10% build. And there's not really any other way forward for Placer County to be a county for everyone, for all its citizens, rich or poor or middle-class. You need to all be able to live here together. And I bear witness that communities where people of different income levels come together to support one another are very alive and well in this community. I work for Prosper Placer and Placer People of Faith and PFLAG. In all of those communities, there are people living on the edge and in need of affordable housing. So, please, I beg of you to consider everyone as you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Jeff Short, North State Building Industry Association. I want to start by thanking especially Steve and Shawna for the amount of time, effort and thought that they've put into this, you know, huge issue. One of the things that I think those of us that have consistently participated in the stake, stakeholders meeting have found that there's a lot of different perspectives and interests in here, but we've found that we can better identify with what people that we might have previously thought of more adversarially, what perspective they're coming from. And that's where the notion that this is a community-wide issue, and so, we need to have a community-wide solution seem to really resonate in those meetings. And so, as a, you know, representative of the building and developer industry, we understand that and we are willing to do our part. But if, as we've demonstrated, not only in Placer County, you know, going back years, but all throughout the state of California, if you look only to our industry to solve the problem, it's not going to get solved, and in fact, we're going to exasperate the general housing crisis by, you know, making it more difficult and more expensive to build housing at all price points. We want to build housing at all price points because we have customers that want to buy at all price points. to buy at all price points. And so, I just appreciate again the effort of the stakeholders and of staff to find this, which I think we see as a great start to find that community solution that this county needs. Thank you.
Good morning, Veronica Blake, Placer Community Foundation. Um, I also want to applaud the staff's efforts. Steve and Shawna have put an enormous amount of work into bringing us together and convening us and, and keeping us on target, and it's been really greatly appreciated. But I would say that I have a, um, we have a point of disagreement with Steve's recommendation. Negotiating fees in lieu on a case-by-case basis is not only, um, not transparent to the citizens, but the county frankly doesn't have a good track record of taking those fees and then turning them into affordable housing. So we think that would be a mistake. We really need to close the fee-in-lie loophole, and we need to require the construction of affordable units. Once that policy's been set, then we can use all the tools that we've been discussing in the stakeholder groups to help us get there. We need to make it easier and cheaper for the developers to build. We need them, they are partners in this effort. And we need annual goals for construction, and if we don't have that, we're just not going to get anywhere. Thanks so much.
Wayne Nader, North Auburn, Chairman, Supervisor Yuler, Board Members Todd and Karen. Um, I think you all know this is a pretty passionate issue for me. It's, I'd say that it's complex, it's probably an understatement. I think if we had, uh, easy solutions, we would have solved this a long time ago. Uh, and, um, I understand that Placer County, as I've indicated in the past, has been cut behind the curve on this. But again, I want to commend, uh, Steve and especially Shawna, that they are racing forward quickly to try to come up with some solutions to this. And so, I do commend their efforts, and I think we're headed in the right direction. And I, I comment that you made before Supervisor Yuler, that, you know, we keep referencing Roseville. Well, Roseville's had a tremendous opportunity, you're correct, because they've been expanding over the last, you know, ten, fifteen years, and so they've had the opportunity with some very large projects to implement this type of a policy. The one thing that I would encourage, and Steve mentioned it, is that we've obviously got Placer Vineyards up, uh, we've got some other big projects, uh, that are coming forward, and this is our opportunity, and we should not let this pass by. We need to jump on this. Uh, we have, uh, obviously Steve mentioned some infill projects type things that we can do, uh, but where we're really going to have an impact is on those larger projects. So we really have got to step up to that and get ready to, to address those. So I just, you know, last time I talked to you about it, I really encouraged that we move this as quickly as possible. I'm glad to hear Steve mentioning that. Try to have something quicker than the end of the year because I think it's important that we get that set up and moving forward in the right direction. Um, you know, this is a statewide issue. I mean, this is not a Placer County issue, but Placer County does have some unique challenges. Uh, you know, the Bay Area people seem to think Placer County is a great place to settle, uh, and they're bringing lots of their money over from the sale of their properties, and they're raising the values of Placer County. I mean, the latest person I heard was Mark Zuckerberg, just spent eighty-nine million dollars on buying a lake property of Tahoe in Placer County. So, uh, we know that this money is just driving the market further and further away from affordability. So, we have to come up with some, uh, unique ways of getting this resolved. Um, I, there's a development that's not far from me and far from Jim and the Government Center, which is Atwood Ranch. Uh, they did an incredible job of incorporating affordable housing, and you can't even tell the difference between it, and it's in there and it works. So we know developers, we know builders can make it work because we've seen it happen. So, encourage you to keep moving this one forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else after this lady comes forward? Anybody else kind of want to address the board? Okay, it looks like you get the last word prior to the board getting on.
That's a good thing. Good afternoon, um, I'm Sue Thompson, I work with the Placer Community Foundation, and I'm also a Realtor, and have been working in this county for over forty years. And I'm in agreement that we do have a housing crisis, and I think that everyone is moving forward in a very positive way, but I think the policy, the policy and the solutions are being mixed up. And I think because of that, it's going to make it difficult to move forward. So I think that with the implementation of an inclusionary housing policy, solutions will follow, and the needs of our citizens will be met. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any additional thoughts or direction that any of my colleagues have for our staff on Okay, Cindy, go ahead.
I wasn't done before.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm passionate about this, and my comments about the East Slope, as you all are well aware, um, yes, Mr. Zuckerberg didn't buy my house, but he did buy two lake fronts that added up to that, um, price. Um, we've, we've been suffering, we're in an extreme situation up there where we haven't had new development, we don't have developers that can build the housing, it's really the turnover. Nine out of ten homes are sold from locals to second homeowners, and that is driven by out-of-area rev, uh, incomes. Um, so I'm passionate about us taking a stand on this throughout the fifth district, as I've met with constituents. This is a huge issue, this and fire. And so where can we head on this issue? What innovations can we bring? And I would just urge that we move as quickly as possible, um, and not wait till the end of the year. Projects come and go, the perception of the public is very different than I think the reality of this board of supervisors and the county staff and what you're doing, but the perception is that we're, we're not taking a strong enough approach. And so, I'd like to see that corrected, I'd like us to take strong, strong position and look at that inclusionary, um, deal with this in lieu of fee for, either eliminate it or, or make it a real number that we can deliver housing with. And I know Steve, in talking with you and Shawna, you don't want the fees, you don't want the money, you want housing built. I agree with that. How can we do that, and how can we expedite it? Uh, would just be my plea to my colleagues up here.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
Um, yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, I want to thank the stakeholders and also Steve and Shawna for, uh, moving forward on this. It seems that we've got about thirteen different strategic goals, um, that we can look at. Uh, some of them, um, have some opportunity, I think that's what we need to do, is start drilling down on these strategic goals and see which ones will work and which won't. Uh, increasing the total amount of housing constructed is a challenge for the county because of the zoning, uh, that we have, and we have rural areas where in cities, Roseville and Rockland, they have density. So that's going to be a challenge for us. Uh, I'd like to, you know, spend more time finding out where these opportunities, zones, properties are, uh, and taking a look at that. So, I think, uh, as I said, that there's some strategic goals here for us to look at, and as a board, I think we need to drill down on those and move forward with some solutions from those. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Moore?
Uh, thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Gustafson's, um, comments, and I appreciate the work Steve, you and Shawna have done, as well as on the community coming together to really look at the issue in whole and identify strategies and opportunities. I do agree that we need to move forward and, uh, move quickly, and Steve, you've heard that from me already, and I appreciate, I mean, you coming to us with this now, and now we've got to look at what are the strategies and what are the things that we have to do. Um, I agree that the county should not be building, um, housing, that's not what we're good at doing, and we shouldn't do that. Um, if there are opportunities, um, to put together something like, uh, housing, uh, Affordable Housing Trust Fund at Land Bank, there might be some opportunity where we can take dollars for smaller projects and utilize a nonprofit to help, uh, as another mechanism, so I think that that's an option to explore. Um, you know, we see very clearly it's not just the developers, uh, it, um, is not just the Realtors, uh, we will be able to take state funds, maybe some federal funds, but we do need to, um, get creative in how we provide this, right? And making it a little bit easier for the developers to actually develop the housing and, and different types of housing, um, product as well, right? We don't need five hundred, a million dollar homes, we need affordable, you know, smaller modular homes, whatever it looks like, um, so that we can actually provide housing for those and make it more affordable. So, um, I just appreciate the work that's been done, I appreciate the people who have participated in the task force, and now it's actually time to put pen to pa- uh, pen to paper and get some strategies that we can agree upon, um, in the next several months.
And Supervisor Wagon?
I'd just add, just to emphasize, we're at a, again, appreciate all the work you've done and the speed by which you've taken, and I like the broad-based approach, approach and the sharing of the, of the cost. Uh, so the only additional thought, I've said those things several times before, so, um, it just strikes me that maybe an opportunity might be to wrap up the in-lie fee question more quickly. It seems to me it's a function of if, what size, and methodology, and maybe we'd be smart to get that off the table and get it put to bed, and then we could cause greater focus on, on what's left, and I'm game for that.
That provide you with a little bit of feedback? You want more?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. Okay, we now jump back in time to our eleven, ten timed item. This is a presentation from CEO's office, I think is taking the lead on this, is that right? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Yuler, members of the board. Holly Powers, Assistant Director of Emergency Services here at Placer County. I'm here to introduce, uh, Brandon Sanders from PG&E, the Governmental Affairs Representative. He will be doing a presentation on PG&E's Community Wildfire Safety Program, including the Public Safety Power Shutdown. As most of you may know, last year, we did have two Public Safety Power shutdowns, uh, during the month of September. Um, they were limited impact, but, um, it definitely brought up a lot of the coordinating pieces. I do want to assure your board that County OES has been coordinating with PG&E as well as other county departments, including the Sheriff's Office, Cal Fire, Placer County Fire, and Public Health, to make sure we're looking at all aspects of how an extended power outage due to a public safety shutdown affects the residents of Placer County and make sure we are prepared, um, in, in the event that that occurs this year. Um, so I'd like to bring Brandon up, sorry, behind me, um, and he'll be doing the presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And is he properly equipped with a little clicker and all that good stuff in order to roll through his slides?
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman Yuler, Supervisors.
Lift that up a little bit and then stand up straight, you don't have to do the, just push forward a little, there you go, and it'll pick you up just fine.
All righty, thanks. Uh, thank you Supervisor Yuler and members of the board, Brandon Sanders, Sierra Division Public Affairs for PG&E, uh, here today to give you a thorough readout on our wildfire safety program. Uh, there's quite a few different components to it, and I think that you'll be pleased with some of the work that we're doing currently, uh, throughout Placer County. So, these are all additive, additional things that we've undertaken as a result of the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen wildfires. Uh, we did acknowledge that we need to be doing more to improve the resiliency of our system and the safety of the communities we serve. Uh, largely three parts to this program is shown on the screen here, that includes monitoring and intelligence, enhanced safety measures, and system hardening, and I'll go into greater detail on these. The first effort undertaken is the establishment of our Wildfire Safety Operations Center. This is a state-of-the-art emergency operations center located at our general office in San Francisco. It's staffed twenty-four seven, three sixty-five by emergency management professionals, meteorologists, utility experts, and the like. It's, uh, served us well in the last, uh, last fire season, and it's going to be even a greater benefit to us and our customers in the current year. One thing that's really exciting is we are installing state-of-the-art weather stations throughout the service territory, and I am happy to report that to date, we have installed four of these in Placer County. Those locations are Forest Hill Road at Michigan Bluff, Alta Boninook at Nerry Red, Forest Hill Road at Todd Valley, and then another one at Hellhole Reservoir. The exciting thing about this is that data is in real time and available to the public if you visit misowest.utah.edu. We did hear some feedback from last year's PSPS events that people were not seeing the weather materialize, that they felt would justify those actions, and so we've added this layer of transparency so that people can verify themselves that these weather conditions are in fact occurring, uh, perhaps not in their immediate area, but, uh, elsewhere in the county. Additionally, we're installing high-definition fire detection cameras, that's in support of, uh, other efforts around wildfire detection, including aerial flights daily between Reading and Auburn. Uh, that's something we've been doing for many years, and those images are also available to the public at alertwildfire.org. One of the biggest pieces of our enhanced safety work in light of the new wildfire risk we're facing is our enhanced vegetation management. This is in addition to our routine work, and what we're looking to do is get greater clearances between our electric conductors and vegetation surrounding them. The illustration on the screen here shows the standard established by the Public Utilities Commission of four feet radial clearance around the conductor. We're looking to increase that to the extent we can in cooperation with customers to, uh, better, better enhance the safety of, of our circuits in relation to vegetation. Uh, one question that we often get from customers is, why are you cutting twelve feet when the standard is only four feet? And the reasoning for that is we need to accommodate for the growth of the tree over the course of a year. The last thing we want to be doing is entering a property multiple times throughout the year, disturbing the ground, disturbing the homeowner, and it's also a ratepayer impact if we have repeated entries into those locations. In addition to our routine inspections that are mandated by the state at regular intervals, we are going back through our entire system in the highest fire threat areas and conducting detailed inspections of towers and poles. That includes using things such as drones, uh, actual individuals climbing those towers and getting eyes on each piece of equipment. In some of the up-country areas, especially here in places like Placer County, we're using helicopters also. And this information is fed back to our control center in real time, and we are identifying needs for repairs and acting on those immediately when they arise. We've currently inspected about two-thirds of the transmission system in the area, and we're working our way through the distribution side as well. And findings could be anything from chipping paint or a missing high voltage sign to, um, equipment that needs replacing, and we're acting on that. This just speaks to the repairs a little more in detail. Um, again, as we're doing these enhanced inspections, immediate needs are addressed, and then we're looking for opportunities to bundle work to minimize customer impact. I do have a really good example of that in real time. Uh, later this month, we're going to be, uh, taking a clearance, overnight clearance at the Forest Hill substation to do some needed repair work, uh, refill the oil in the cooling tanks and those types of things, and it's multiple lines of business doing this work. And they had initially submitted multiple clearance requests that would have impacted the town multiple times, and we just, uh, finalized the details on that yesterday to eliminate two of those three clearances. So that's looking to bundle work, lessen the customer impact and the inconvenience that, that puts on, uh, our customers. We're also doing a lot around system hardening, that includes going back with coated conductor, where currently we would just have like a bare aluminum conductor, which is more or less the industry standard, uh, we call that tree wire. Looking to, uh, factor in things like terrain and weather as opposed to just the functionality of the system when we're doing improvements or repairs. And I was sharing with Holly before the meeting, uh, we're doing a lot of work around establishing resilience zones, so what these would be is the construction of a loop circuit in the center of a rural community such as Forest Hill, where in the event of a public safety power shut-off or a large wildfire that took the grid down, we would be able to roll in a generation asset and keep things like the gas station, the firehouse, and the grocery store energized so that people have access to those essential services in an emergency situation. And we are currently working with Placer County Water Agency to secure land and those types of things to construct one of these in Forest Hill. So it's not going to be an immediate development, but we're taking steps to get that done. Some of you may know that we have a lot of automation in the system, this allows us to address issues quickly, reconfigure the system to address outages and damages. Uh, part of that automated system is, uh, what we call line reclosers. These are essentially automatic circuit breakers that if there's a fault in the line, the breaker opens and immediately closes again to test it. This is really good to have in the system during the winter months, uh, it lessens the duration of outages, uh, but we have acknowledged that there's a potential for ignition if a downed wire were to occur, uh, during the summer and that breaker were to close automatically. So we're disabling those proactively during fire season. Uh, there's trade-offs, it could result in a longer duration outage, but it greatly improves the safety of the system in the driest seasons. So speaking to the public safety power shut-off, uh, we've changed course a little bit on that, and we're now working really closely with Cal OES and the other two investor-owned utilities in the state on customer outreach related to this. Uh, we definitely understand that it's an inconvenience for our customers, but, uh, it's really something that we're doing as a last resort in the interest of public safety. There's a number of factors that go into that decision point, kind of the baseline being a red flag condition, high winds, extreme low humidity, extreme low fuel moisture... low humidity, extreme low fuel moisture. And also we're basing our decisions on real-time information we're getting from the field. If we see those weather conditions materialize, we're deploying resources throughout the affected area and providing that information back to our Safety Operations Center in San Francisco. So the areas most at risk for a public safety power shut-off are what are termed the Tier Two and Tier Three fire risk areas. This map was developed in partnership with the CPUC, CAL FIRE and others and it's it's clear, I'm sure, to most of you without even seeing this map, that the majority of Placer County is within either a Tier Two or Tier Three area, pretty much from Loomis East to the summit. And so this just gives an illustration of what we're basing our decisions on in terms of geography. So coming out of last year's events, we've refined our process greatly. A big part of that was notifications. We did do kind of a lot of notifications on the first event. Some of the feedback that we got was that needed to be at more regular intervals and more detailed. For the second event, I personally convened conference calls with all the affected communities, including, you know, everyone from OES directors to sheriff's offices and all of those. And we were doing those every four hours leading up to the event. You may recall, we de-escalated that on November 8th, the same day that the campfire occurred. But we have greatly improved our communications efforts around that. We have gone through our database and identified key points of contact for every community so that we can immediately get with the right person. In addition, we've refined our customer notification process and I will say it's important for those listening on the webcast that if you've not updated your personal contact information on your PG&E profile either online or through the call center, please do that so that we can get in touch with you if needed. So the big part of the public safety power shut-off is the restoration process. When we de-energize our system, we essentially lose that remote visibility. That requires thorough inspections of all the affected circuits. We want to make sure that everything's intact before we turn it back on. So for some of the close-in areas, like let's say the outskirts of Auburn, that'll happen relatively quickly. In some of the up-country areas, it's a bit more difficult because you're going overland through mountainous terrain. It requires ATVs, foot patrols, helicopters and those types of things. But we definitely will be working aggressively to restore power following an event. Of course, we'll need to isolate and repair damage that's found as part of those inspections and then of course, those customer notifications will go out once power is restored. One of our biggest efforts right now, and it's in concert again with CAL OES and the other investor-owned utilities, is preparing our customers. PG&E has a plan. We want our customers to have a plan as well. That starts with updating contact information. There's tons of resources on our website regarding emergency preparedness, things that individuals should do now to put themselves in a good position for weathering this type of event. One thing I'd like to also share is that while generators are great for, you know, keeping some level of normalcy in people's lives, it's important that those are installed correctly by a qualified electrical worker because if they're not, there is a risk to our line workers of circuit being backfed and energized and us not knowing it because we don't have the ability to identify all those generators. So it's important those are installed correctly. So that concludes the presentation. As always, I'm available to the board, county staff and anyone else who might have questions. I know we're up against lunchtime and I did not bring any sandwiches, so I'll go ahead and defer to the board if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Board members, have any questions? How many, how many of the power shut-off events did you have last year in our area, do you know?
There, there were two. There was one where we actually de-energized customers in Placer and the second one de-escalated as the weather conditions diminished and we ended up not acting on that second one. And we anticipate, this is again, something that would be occurring as a last resort and we'll do everything we can to keep the power on, but under extreme conditions, we'll need to take that action in the interest of public safety.
Okay. Supervisor.
Yes, Brandon, thank you so much for the outreach and bringing this forward. There's no doubt that PG&E is taking this very seriously and it's just my observation of the number of trucks I've seen out and about on the roadways and taking care of those kinds of projects. It's come to my attention though that there's a new member of your family. Is that correct? Do you have a new member?
Uh, yes, I have a three-week-old baby boy at home.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor, appreciate that.
All right. Anybody else? Supervisor Gusterson.
Yeah, I was just surprised, I think, at the CPUC fire threat map that there were no Tier Three extremes in the Tahoe Basin, but certainly in the foothills area in the east, the west slope of the district. But interesting that Tahoe was exempted. Can you speak to how those decisions were made on the?
You know, that's an excellent question and I don't have a good answer for why that might be. It looks, I can't really zoom in quite that much, but it looks like the edges of the lake would be shaded.
Yeah, they're elevated.
And I believe that one of the factors that played into this was the extent of utility infrastructure in a given area. So as you can see, the the high Sierra, given that there's not a whole lot in terms of facilities up there, I don't think that, I think that was a factor as to why those, that kind of strip in the highest elevation isn't included.
Supervisor Gusterson, I'd also like to say there's another component in that, the when we're looking at this and it's called Zone One, which is the tree mortality. So a lot of that non-Tier One, Tier Two is included in the tree mortality zoning that's included in that understanding. So I think one of the maps that was included in the package, the second one had the Zone One tree mortality on it as well. So it's another component that we're also looking at.
Can we get those maps blown up for the county just so we are more familiar and can educate our public on that as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you all very much.
All right. I think that concludes all of our timed items. So we will go ahead and move on to our first department item. And that is a SEDRA item. Morning, afternoon, whatever time it is.
All right, I'm anticipating we're, we're next, so.
Yeah.
Steve Pedretti again, Community Development. We're here today to make a presentation on our new e-services website. This is e-services 1.0, very, very new site, less than two weeks old that we've actually had the website pulled together in totality. In today's world, customers want their services 24/7. They want to be able to get information. They want to apply for permits. They even want to perhaps make a call and and get some information coming back, get some answers at all hours of the day. And so we are attempting, this e-services is our attempt to meet that need. Before we start, I really want to thank Jarrett Thiessen in the IT Department. I am always loathe to work with a county central IT department. I've had problems in other jurisdictions in the past. They have been nothing but great. They've been extremely responsive. They jumped on everything and I'm really very, very happy they have partnered with us and it's been a really good partnership. So I want to throw that in. I also want to thank a lot of the SEDRA staff. We have over 30 folks, I think, working on pieces of this. Eighteen months ago, I saw a presentation at CSAC by a futurist who talked about the impact of artificial intelligence on how we work going into the future and it really struck me that there are some big changes. I shared that with my staff and Shawna Purvines took that to heart and she really ran with it. She was tasked with updating, being the lead on updating our website. Soon thereafter, we ended up with, she organized six different efforts that all were going in parallel that pulled together to create this, this program and create the e-services. She called it a virtual public counter. So we should have that public counter available at all times. With that, I'm gonna just hand it over to, I think Shawna's gonna start off.
Good afternoon, Shawna Purvines with SEDRA. So as Steve said, you know, he, the, the future of our planning efforts, our local entitlements are going to change. Technology is changing that, it's changing it faster than many of us can keep up. I know for myself, that's definitely the case. Just the, the implementation of automated car systems is going to be changing how we plan our cities and our communities going forward. So this was a really good opportunity to kind of look at the systems we had and as Steve said, you know, we reached out to IT and they were all over it. They were great to work with and really enjoyed kind of moving through this process. One of the things we looked at was the upcoming generation, Generation Z. So we had Baby Boomers, we had the Xers, we had the Millennials, now we have Z. Z is right now, they are aged four to 21. And if we think a little bit about these future customers of ours, they have never lived in a time where there wasn't an internet. And coming next year, it is predicted they will have 40% of the purchasing power in the United States. As a mother of two of those, I'm pretty sure they're using my money to do that purchasing at this point, but I, you know, they definitely are driving the decisions of the household. Let's just say that right now. But, you know, these are the Amazon kids. These, you know, they point, they click, they buy. It is delivered sometimes that same day. This is, you know, kind of the world they're living in and they, if not now being, you know, 21 at the upper end, are going to be our customers going forward. So about a year ago, when we did launch the efforts to update our web page, myself and Justin, working in IT for SEDRA, we started talking about what all we could do and we set forward this implementation plan. And we actually looked at, you know, the objective was to be leaders in customer service innovation and to allow access to our services 24/7. So what that meant was, is we needed to get automated. So all of our business services moved up to an automation system and we looked at cloud-based technology so it was easier to access anytime, anyplace outside of the county. The outcome, we did still want to ensure that our processes and procedures are achieved. We did not want to lose some of the key objectives or policies that we wanted, that we find important here in Placer County. But as we talked about earlier, one of those goals and objectives, both for housing or economic development, is to streamline that permit review process. Today, as I mentioned, sometimes time and the time to do business is actually outweighing the cost of doing business. They prefer to get it done faster and are willing to pay a little bit more to ensure that that timeline is being met. So to do that, we needed to create those clear, concise, middle requirements. We needed to reduce that turnaround time from application to action. At the same time, we wanted to provide accountability and transparency both to our internal customers and our external customers. So with that, as Steve said, we started calling this the virtual counter. We have rebranded it or renamed it to SEDRA's e-services. At this time, that 1.0 really includes that webpage. We've added in a check-in or appointment management system. We have substantially updated our GIS and our map property information. It used to just really be more focused on our land use information. We've now added in treasurer tax collector, recorder, assessor. It's, it's becoming and it will continue to grow to be a very robust information system that is geo-coded to parcels. The permit guide, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about and provide a demo for, was an exciting way for people to go in and kind of plug and play, whether it's a business or a new home, and be able to determine what permits are needed and fee estimates are provided. We also expanded our electronic payment options. We automated some of our building inspection routes and our field inspection reports. That is happening on the building side. The engineering side will be starting soon. We've also expanded our electronic plan check abilities. We already do allow some electronic plan check. By the end of the year, we would like for 100% of our applications to be submitted electronically as a goal. So from the other side of all this technology, I think the thing that I'm probably most excited about is the analytics that come out of it. Each and every one of those systems now provide us with weekly, daily, weekly, monthly, whatever we want to set it at, information on what is, what the questions are being asked, how much time it's taking them to ask them, which ones are getting right answers, and actually estimates of how much staff time is being saved possibly by not having to actually take the phone call by the system itself being able to help them. With that, I'm actually going to turn it over to IT to talk a little bit about our new chatbot.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chairman Supervisor Euler, Mike Spack, IT Manager. So yes, there was a lot going on and the screen just changed.
Good thing you have the technology.
There we go. Good thing we've got IT here. So yeah, I want to emphasize before we get into some of the, to a thin sliver of the technology, the partnership with SEDRA, which was, which was very productive and I think we built a good foundation on the e-services. Chatbot is just a small part of it. It's called a messenger application and evidently that's where the people are these days. Again, so roughly in quarter one of the year 2015, the monthly active users for messaging apps actually surpassed the social media apps such as Facebook's. So it's got quite a bit of capacity there. So you're probably already using voice assistants. If you have Amazon Alexa or Google Assistant, you're using them right now. So they're ubiquitous, they're smart speakers, cellphones, over 66 million right now, and I think that's a conservative estimate. There's a 40% increase over 2018. So between Amazon and Google, they make up 85% of the market, so we knew we had to implement both and we have. One concern there was two different rails and two different administrations' efforts. So the development team architected a shared database, so we don't have to do any dual entry there. On the bottom, there's just descriptions and pictures of Amazon Echo Dot and Google Assistant and you can also use your cellphone because you can download both of those and/or your laptop. And to get started with Google Assistant, you would just say Ask Placer County. Another really interesting feature that I think is going to have a lot of use is we've also developed a user interface for our website. And with this, you can both use your keyboard or voice recognition. I think it's going to be used a lot. If you think about it, even a very intuitive website today, you'll go in, hmm, do I use the search? I think I know the department. Should I use the department? Then you'll drill down. Imagine asking a question like, what's the minimum depth of a water pipe and having it answered immediately via this user interface versus the website, navigating the website. Even on frequently asked questions, there's, there's so many of them. So one thing that the architecture was missed entirely was there was really no administration portal. So we had to build it all. We recognized quickly that we need a good feedback loop to make this efficient. So the first thing was what was the missed queries? Not what we think people are asking, but what are they asking and what are we not able to answer? So we built that screen. The next thing was we need some granularity and we need some permissions, single sign-on to make this very usable with the departments for the rollout because they're going to handle their, what we call content, the users and then the responses. There's so much what we call chat-worthy data out there. Our website is almost 2,000 pages, so that's going to be a lot of work. We've got to make it very user-friendly for the departments to, to use. We also got into some analytics. We had to go up to the, the Google Cloud and parse some very complicated logs, but here you can input the duration. You can see what questions were asked. And what I really like is when you click on a session, you can actually see the dialogue of what was asked and what was responded. And with that, we have a quick demo for you and we'll start with Ben Palacio and Google Assistant.
Hi, my name is Ben Palacio. Just one point to, one thing to point out before I start is how Mike mentioned that there's a single unified data set, which means all of these different ways in to ask questions is handled by one same similar, sorry, same data set reducing management. This demonstration I'm going to show you is on the Google Assistant device. However, it can be done as you saw on the web UI, also with the Echos and the Google Home devices that you have possibly in your home right now. And this is all live right now. Hey, Google, let's talk to Placer County.
Welcome to the Placer County Chat Assistant. Take a look at some examples of what you can ask me.
How do I schedule an inspection?
To schedule an inspection, please contact the inspection line at 530-745-3020 or visit the Citizen Access Portal on the county website. Anything else?
I'm going to pause it right here and just mention that it did answer the question. However, below that question is a card with additional details. Below the details is a button, Permits Portal, which takes us to the Citizen Access Portal. From there, we can From there, we can actually proceed to schedule an inspection. If for some reason we got here by error or we want to ask something else, we can simply complete our task here, close the window and it takes us immediately back in to the Google Assistant application. Now, before I ask the next question, I want to just briefly describe it. This is what we call a dynamic intent. And what that means is, when I ask the question, it's going to understand that it needs more information. I'm going to ask it about my property zoning. It's hard to tell what that is without an address, so it needs to come back and ask me for an address. And then it will proceed to go to the county GIS system and pull accurate zoning information and give it to me. Of course, it's a lot quicker than that. What's my property zoning?
Can I have the street address?
2700 Bell Road.
This address appears to fall within the Commercial Plan Development Zone. Would you like to look up another address?
No, not right now.
Anything else you need?
Not right now, thank you.
Thanks for chatting with Placer County.
That's it for this chatbot portion. I'm going to hand it over to Ronna Colta who's going to show you the web UI.
All right. I hope they can change the screen. Okay. Hi, I'm Ronna Colta and I'll be demoing the Placer County chatbot that is currently hosted on our Community Development Resource Agency website. To locate the chatbot, you can either click on the e-services link at the bottom or hover to the I Want To menu item and click on the Placer County chat link. This will redirect me to the Placer County chat webpage where it briefly explains what the Placer County chatbot has to offer and that it is currently limited to basic Community Development Resource Agency information. To load the chatbot, you can click on the Placer County chat link or on the virtual Once the Placer County chat assistant loads, you can ask your question either by typing it as a message or by speaking through your microphone. I'll now, a demo speaking through my microphone. And I'll also click on the speaker icon over here, which unmutes the bot and allows it to talk back to me with its voice. What is the minimum pipe depth requirement?
What kind of pipe or line? For example, sewer or electrical?
Water pipe.
The minimum depth requirement is 12 inches of cover measured from the top of the pipe.
Also, for any reason, if you're not sure what to ask the chatbot or I'm not sure how to phrase your question, you can simply say or type FAQ.
Please select a category below for specific questions or simply ask your question.
The chatbot will help you drill down to find the question you're trying to ask. So let's say my next question is about buildings. And maybe I want to know a little bit about building permits and fees. The chatbot will respond back with an answer. And this card over here has more information. And by clicking on the Permit Guide Portal button, I'll be redirected to the Permit Guide Portal online. And from here, I'll hand it off back to Shawna and Justin who are going to demo the portal for you. Thank you very much.
So what you just demonstrated was both Google Assist and Alexa. As far as we know, there's a couple of places in California that are trying out Alexa. We don't know of anybody doing Google Assist and we now have both. So we have 85% or 85% of the market that would, that can assist with that. So that was pretty cool. So the permit portal, I'm going to just run through a, an example of a project permit requirements and fee estimate really quickly. I generally, when I demo this, do something economic development related, usually opening something like a donut shop. But today, because it is, we've been talking a lot about housing, I thought today we would go through the residential portal and do a quick example of what it can do. So the, the first thing I will do is it'll give you a little bit of an overview of the six questions that are going to be asked. I'm just going to go ahead and go next. I think this time we'll go ahead and open a new resident and it will be a multifamily. What this loads is a map of Placer County and it identifies where multifamily is allowed by right, where it's allowed conditionally and where it is prohibited. So the gray is prohibited. So we're picking a site here and it will be less, we're going to go ahead and do a fourplex. It'll go through a series of questions that Justin so quickly is answering for me. So probably no county right away on this one. And will be public water system, yeah. And as you go through and start to click, you'll start to notice that on the right-hand side of the screen, the different types of permits that are going to be expected to be used as this. Now you'll start to notice on the side, it's starting to estimate fees for you. So still continue to ask you a few more questions. Square, yeah, 4,000, it's fine. I'm sure, yep, air conditioning, 4,000. And number of stories, yep, electric service charge. So, and you can pick any one of these and as you go, that will all recalculate on the right-hand side.
See, look how expensive.
It does, isn't it? Just for a...
Just saying.
So go ahead and go to the next. At the end of it, it does provide a nice little summary, gives you an aerial of the site.
It wasn't a little summary.
A little bit. Shows you the location, gives you the zoning details, still provides you the permits and the estimates as you go on down. It also prints out exactly how you asked, answered the questions that were asked of you. So you could print this off and then if you had questions, still come in to staff. You could, you know, be off-site, use our queue list, get into our queue for an appointment, bring your list in and be able to either final your permits. Or if you're feeling really comfortable and you think you got this, you can go ahead and permit the, the permit application. And this will launch you into our electronic permit system. Oh, what, Justin, you want to walk through that a little bit?
Correct.
Before you continue, Supervisor Gore, your lights on. Did you have a question you want to ask or did you hit that by accident perhaps? There you go.
Thank you. So what this allows you to do is actually save your project and then it takes you to this final screen, which is really, it turns estimates and ideas and it gives you an avenue to actually start applying for these types of, of permits and clearances that are required. So this page describes the different agencies and divisions, agencies and divisions that you'll need to speak with. And it gives you directions for applying in person or in some cases, applying online where we offer those services. So it, it helps guide you to, to that end goal.
So I think with that, that kind of wraps it up. I do want to stress, right now, this is SEEDRA-specific. So we encourage you to go and play with some of the SEEDRA-related items. If you go right now and ask where the nearest trail is, it's not going to tell you because it hasn't been advanced to be more countywide. But we do hope you'll play with it and you'll let us know what you think. But every question is asked that you ask, we are seeing it on the backend. And if it's answered incorrectly, we're working very quickly to get those corrected. Sometimes within minutes, we're able to have those corrected and back out. With that, I will stop.
Yeah, what's really cool here is that it continues learning. Every time we ask, someone asks a question, at least on the Google side or on the, on the computer, that if we don't have an answer, that goes to a file. And once or twice a week, somebody is pulling that file, adding those answers. Right now, we ship it over to IT and they put them in. They're working on a utility that will allow us to go ahead and do that. And so the more questions that are asked, the more this learns and the better it is. So it, it doesn't have everything right now. There's, you know, you'll ask, I asked for a water heater permit the other day, it didn't, didn't get it to me. I could find it on here, but it didn't say that. Now that they've got that question, it should show up in the next week or so. So it's, it's a very cool system. It's not perfect, but it really is very nice.
So I'll just wrap up. Jared Thieson, Placer County CIO, Chairman Eulker, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present today. I wanted to take a moment and thank Steve and the Community Development Resource Agency to really allow us to partner with them and bring this innovative solution to the county. There's, you know, definitely a lot of demand in other departments and so the interfaces that we're building, using SEEDRA and that partnership will be able to leverage throughout the county. So much more coming on this topic, it's very much in pilot phase right now, but it's going really well. Thank the IT team here, they're brilliant people and they're doing a great job. So we're looking forward to rolling this out countywide. Thank you very much.
And we want to emphasize, we don't know anybody else in the country that's doing both Google and Assist and Alexa. So we're pretending, at least at this point, that we're, we're the world leader. Whether that's true or not, I have no idea. There are a handful of folks out there that are doing it. So we're really on the front edge of this. I, I think we can make it a heck of a tool if we, if we keep at it. So there you go. I will, I will be bringing forward as part of our fee study that we have later this summer, a technology fee, which is every other jurisdiction in this area has except for us. I would like to fund a position, a building or a business analyst-type position that would help us continue these and really, and really take them on to the next level. So we hope to do that more this summer.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, unless that thing integrates with Grubhub or Uber Eats, given the time, I'm going to say that we're probably about done. Any other comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Gore, yes?
Just one. Thank you for the presentation, the hard work that you've done. As we move forward, I'm sure there's lots of areas here in the county that can use additional updating to get us to the 21st century when it comes to IT applications. So thank you for this work and I look forward to seeing other areas that we can update using technology.
Great. Thank you all. Okay, go ahead and move on to Health and Human Services. Got a number of items here. And there she is.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. After one afternoon.
Yeah. And I have a few items here for you today. So Amy Ellis started the day with giving you a presentation on mental health matters and you so nicely did the proclamation for May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And for the Children's System of Care, I'm here to present all of the contracts, many of them, that actually help us make that happen on the children's side. So I'd like to start with the first one. And welcome also to our newest supervisor. So, thank you. So I am Twila Abrahamson with the Children's System of Care. The Children's System of Care is mandated by the State Department of Healthcare Services to provide a range of mental health services, including psychiatry, counseling and social skills training to children and youth, as well as intensive mental health services which are most often currently delivered in group homes, which provide services 24/7. I have been updating your board on aspects of Assembly Bill 403, known as Continuum of Care Reform, over the past two years. This is the most sweeping and widespread reform effort in child welfare services in the past 25 years. CC HARS has been in implementation phase and is still anticipated to lessen the overall numbers of children statewide who will require these intensive residential placements and lessen the time children and youth spend out of their communities. However, during the transition to hopefully specially-trained resource families based in the community, there is still a need for these intensive programs for very troubled youth. These programs, formerly named group homes and now known as short-term residential therapeutic programs, effectively served 37 Placer youth last year from the child welfare, probation and mental health service sectors. Of note, less than 3% of all Placer County youth in care require residential or congregate care services compared to a statewide standard of 10%. So these contracts assure that timely and effective intensive mental health services are delivered to youth in order to limit the time and duration of residential care and help them acquire the skills necessary to return to home as quickly as possible. The SDRTP providers responsible for these services are listed in Attachment A, which has been provided to you. And all providers under, added to the annual list under the Director's Amendment Authority will be published to the board by inclusion on the fiscal year 2020-21 year list. We bring them every year. So for this one, we are requesting that your board take the following actions. First, approve the annual contracts with multiple entities for intensive specialized mental health services for group home providers in a maximum aggregate amount of $450,000 by way of a maximum payment authorization established by the auditor controller for fiscal year 2019-20. Approve the provider list. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the provider agreements and authorize him to sign subsequent amendments consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. And second, we are also requesting that you authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to amend the list of providers as long as any amendments are reflected in the 2021 list. So expenditures for these services are in the amount of $450,000. They're included in the department's fiscal year 2019-20 final budget. 87% or $391,500 are state and federal funding and the required county general fund match is $58,500 or 13%. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you for your consideration.
Questions by board members? All right, seeing none, members of the public want to address this item. Pleasure, the board?
Second.
It was Supervisor Gore? Yep. Motion by Gore, second by Wagan, all in fair press. Aye opposed with Holmes temporarily absent. All right, moving on. Next item.
All right. This is Contract for Emergency Foster Care. So the Placer County Children's Emergency Shelter closed on December 13th, 2016 to comply with, again, AB 403 or the Continuum of Care Reform. Through a competitive process, Coinania Family Homes received the award to develop a community-based shelter model, providing emergency family homes for children when they are temporarily removed from their parents and/or those with a variety of behavioral health needs while they are waiting out-of-home placement. Coinania successfully recruited a number of foster families, now called resource families, for the emergency shelter model. But through this developmental process, it was determined that there was not enough resource family homes willing to take youth with behavioral challenges, particularly teens. Therefore, the Children's System of Care, in conjunction with Coinania, created a small six-bed emergency group home, which then transitioned to one of those things I talked to you about just a minute ago, the short-term residential therapeutic programs. So for those children and youth who are able to be placed directly into a resource family, Coinania continues to recruit and maintain a network of emergency family resource homes and they do this in adjacent to or right in Placer County for our community-based emergency shelter model. So this contract covers both. So we're requesting that your board take the following action. Approve a contract with Coinania Foster Homes for emergency and traditional foster care in the amount of $2,381,610 for the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed $100,000, consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. Contract expenditures of $1,190,805 are included in the department's fiscal year 2019-20 requested budget and the same amount will be included in the fiscal year 2020-21 proposed budget. This contract is also with the same split of 87,000 or 87% in federal and state funds of $2,072,010 and $309,600 or 13% is required for the county general fund match. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this one and again, thank you for your consideration.
All right. Questions by board members? Seeing none, members of the public. Pleasure, the board?
Second.
Motion Gusterson, second Wagan, all in fair press. Aye? Aye opposed, none? Okay, Adam Sieg.
All right. So I am Twila Abrahamson still, but for this one, I am presenting for the children and adult system of care. Placer County Health and Human Services, as you have heard, is mandated by the State Department of Mental, of Healthcare Services to provide mental health services. These are inpatient, crisis, psychiatry, counseling, all sorts of things. To meet the lesser intensive training to adults and children in community, clinic and outpatient settings, for these services at this end of the mandate, Placer County employs a nationally-recognized model that utilizes a network of private counselors, therapists and psychologists to maximize the availability of necessary specialty services while limiting the need for more costly hospitalization and residential care. This mental health private network provides outpatient services to children, youth and adults and currently includes 55 licensed independent practitioners. This list is shown in Attachment A, which you have. All providers added to this annual list under the Director's Amendment Authority will be published to the board, again, similar to the first item, by inclusion on the fiscal year 2020-21. This umbrella contract assures that timely and effective mental health services are delivered to approximately 500 children and adults each year, resulting in better outcomes for families and lower rates of out-of-home and hospital care. So we're requesting that your board take the following actions. Approve three-year agreements with multiple providers for mental health services in an aggregate amount of $1,500,000, $500,000 annually by way of a payment authorization established by the auditor controller for fiscal years 2019 through 2022. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services or designate to sign the provider agreements and sign subsequent amendments consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work, again, with risk management and county council concurrent. and sign subsequent amendments consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work, again, with risk management and county council concurrence. And secondly, to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services or the designee to approve the 2019-20 network provider list and amend the list of providers as long as any amendments are reflected in the fiscal year 2021 network provider list. So funding for this in the amount of $500,000 has been included in the department's fiscal year 1920 proposed budget for these mandated services. 87% or $435,000 is the federal and state funding, and $65,000 is the 13% required county general fund match. And additionally, funding the amount of $500,000 will be included annually in the department's fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2122 future budgets respectively. So I would be happy to answer any questions about this one as well.
I see no questions from my colleagues, any members of the public? All right, what sports pleasure, item C. I heard a motion. All right, motion Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you, item D.
All right. This is a contract amendment with Uplift Family Services. So Uplift Family Services provides federally and state-mandated intensive mental health specialty and psychoeducational services for children and their families. They provide shorter-term wraparound stabilization and case management services to appropriate non-system families who have been referred for formal intervention to help them remain out of the child welfare service. Uplift is one of the largest, most comprehensive nonprofit mental health treatment programs in California. For Placer youth served by Uplift's most intensive service type in 2017-18 at discharge, 91% remained with their families in their community and were not required to be placed in costlier foster care or out-of-home care. 100% were not on formal or informal probation, and 100% were intending school with no issues. Approval of this contract amendment and funding will allow Uplift Family Services to hire one additional wraparound family facilitator and two additional family support counselors. This will enable them to offer in-home intensive services to an additional 12 families per year. We're requesting that your board take the following action. Approve a contract amendment with Uplift Family Services for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020 to provide these specialty mental health, psychoeducational, crisis intervention and follow-up, and outreach and engagement services to youth and families. This increases funding by $402,000 to a total amount of $3,126,398. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the amendment and to sign subsequent amendments up to $100,000 consistent with the current agreement's subject matter and scope of work, again, with risk management and county council concurrence. And as stated earlier, total expenditures in this contract are $3,126,398. Of this amount, half of it, $1,943,201, is included in the department's 1920 proposed budget, and the same amount will be in the additional budget for 2021. This is also a 94% of federal and state funds, and only 6% is required in mandated county general fund match, and that would be $116,592. So I'd be happy to answer questions about this one. And thank you in advance.
Any questions from me, my colleagues, anybody from the public? Nothing there either. Motion Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. And item E.
You're almost there, this is the last one for me today.
And I'm sorry, you are who?
Still Twila Abrahamson. Still, I think. This is also, by the way, a contract with Uplift Family Services. So in order to best meet the needs of Placer County's youth, as we've talked about with some of the severe end of the spectrum that are not residential, there are still serious mental health challenges that we deliver the intensive in-home counseling, crisis stabilization, and mental health services. And one element of this approach includes a State Department of Healthcare Services mandated specialty in-home crisis service. And this is designed to prevent the youth from entering inpatient hospitalizations or other institutional settings. These are often really difficult to access, and on average, they're five times as costly as any of our other care. This mandate, should you be curious about it, came from the Emily Q lawsuit and the settlement process. Under this agreement that we're proposing, up to 140 children each year with significant mental health challenges will receive this effective and cost-saving service and avoid out-of-home or hospital care. The legal action brought in another jurisdiction, we won't talk about that very, very large county to the south of us, against the state and that particular county, settled in 2010, resulted in this requirement, the Emily Q requirement, that counties make additional accessibility to this particular service. It has to be available every single year. So we were requesting that your board take the following action. Approve a contract with Uplift Family Services in the amount of $1,635,664 for therapeutic behavioral support and specialty mental health services for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and sign any subsequent amendments not to exceed $100,000 consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. This two-year contract is funded with, again, the 87% or $1,441,164 in state and federal funds, and 13% or $194,500 in county general fund. And they are both included in the 2019-20 proposed budget and the department's fiscal year 2021 future budgets respectively. So this is the last one, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I hate to break a streak, but I do have a question.
That's right.
Because I'm sort of curious, how long have we been providing these services as a result of that lawsuit?
The, I think, was actually settled around 2013. And then what happened at that time is that we were under mandate to start doing the services, so everybody started providing them. Then we had auditors that came out and insisted that we also increase those services every year since that time.
And you said we can provide up to, services for up to 140 children, correct?
Yes.
I'm guessing that we manage results and see the effects of that work.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's going well.
Actually, TBS is a really, statewide, it's proven to be a very effective service, mostly because it's in the home. And part of what therapeutic behavioral services does is the person who goes in the home identifies what the triggers are to the child's behavior. And then part of the idea then is to teach the parent what those triggering behaviors are so that they can recognize them before they start, and then teach them, the parents themselves, how to bypass that or to change the dynamics so that the behaviors don't continue.
Great, thanks, I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome.
All right, well, you got your question answered, so you want to offer the motion then too? All right, we have a motion Gore, second, Gusterson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. I'm sorry, I didn't take public comment on that one. All you all can take your turn now. All right, we'll pass. Okay, moving on, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We got hot asphalt. Hot edible asphalt, no, not edible. Darn. Tell where my mind is.
Good afternoon, supervisors.
Good afternoon.
My name is Brett Wood, I'm your purchasing manager, and I'm joined with Mr. Kevin Tabor, the roads manager. We're here today to request your board's approval of a competitive bid number 100215 and a negotiated agreement with Vulcan Materials, Don Robinson Sand and Gravel, and Tiger Aggregates for the purchase of hot mix and winter mix asphalt products in the total amount of $993,000, as well as request your board's approval for renewal of the same and change order authority in the amount of $99,300. This approval would be for the period of May 14, for today, through March 31, 2020. And these services are funded through the Department of Public Works Road Maintenance Division budget for this fiscal year as well as next year's proposed budget. So these recommendations are based off a formal bid, and the unit prices were increased from our prior bidding period of approximately 4% up to about 6.5% over what we had done last time. The hot mix asphalt and the crude oil fluctuation over that same period of time ranged from 0 to 19% fluctuation. So we feel like these are a reasonable increase in prices. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, board members have any questions on the item? Question for council, is it sufficient to take one motion on item 12A1, 2, and 3?
Yes, please take separate items, separate actions.
Separate actions, Roger that. Does anybody out there want to comment on this before I start reading? Okay, we're being asked to approve an award for competitive bid 10215 to CalMac Company, DBA Vulcan Materials Company of Roseville, C.A.N. Grass Valley, and Don Robinson Sand and Gravel of Auburn for the as-needed purchase of hot mix asphalt and winter patch products in the maximum aggregate amount of $873,000 for the period, May 14, 19 through March 31, 20, funded by Department of Public Works Road Maintenance Division final budget, as contained herein. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry? Thank you. Low blood sugar down there, get that man something.
I will second that.
Get that man something too. All right, we have a motion, Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you, the next one is to approve the renewal of the negotiated agreement with A. Tiger and Sons for the as-needed purchase of hot mix asphalt products, maximum amount of $120,000, period, May 14, 19, March 30, 20, funded also by the road department in the budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion. So moved, sorry.
That's right. I'd have taken that. As a matter of fact, if you just went yo, that would work for me. All right, motion Gusterson, second, Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. And finally, we get to approve the option to renew the resulting agreement for three additional one-year terms, authorize change orders at a combined three-year total not to exceed 10% or $99,300 in the aggregate of the recommended award amount of $993,000, and authorize purchasing managers to sign the agreements, transfer funds between the agreements as needed. Thank you. So we're going to give Wigan the motion, and was that who second, Bonnie the second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much, you guys are out of here.
Thank you.
Moving on.
All right. Good afternoon. And certainly, I'm Matt Randall, Senior Engineer with the Department of Public Works. Certainly appreciate you working through all the important issues. I have a PowerPoint, but I promise I'll be concise, as concise as possible.
This is an important one.
Yeah. This is the Penrun Road, the photo you see, and it was in your packet as well as Penrun Road. This photo was taken recently. The road is sustained damage, and basically, our road crews have been keeping this open and repaired since 2017. They've been doing a great job while we've been on the engineering and project side, developing the project and getting our permits. But now we're ready to go to construction, which is why we are, why I'm here this afternoon. So the summarized actions, we're asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works to advertise for construction. Authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to award and execute a construction contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for an amount not to exceed $2.37 million and to execute necessary change orders up to a maximum amount of $131,000 in accordance with the Public Contract Code. And then we're also asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to award a professional services agreement for construction management services to the services associated with the construction of this project in an amount not to exceed $350,000. And I just want to, it's worth mentioning that, you know, we're still competitively soliciting all these projects, just like we usually do. The idea behind the delegated authority is so that we can get to construction as quickly as possible and then finish it before October, which is a constraint in our permits. So we're just trying to move as fast as possible.
You and us both.
Yes. I said I'd be concise. So here's a summary of the timeline. Winter 2017, we all know we had some major storms. Penrun Road was damaged, and our road crews did a good job fixing it, but what we noticed was the road continued to settle. So we took various actions. One of the biggest things we did was we started discussions with the regulatory agencies at that point. And the two things that we found was we needed a bigger crossing for flood flows and hydraulics. That was a Central Valley Flood Protection Board requirement. We also needed, Secret Ravine is critical salmon habitat. And so we needed a natural bottom crossing with spawning gravel and the like, so we elected to build, to design a bridge. In 2018, we submitted our permit request, and long story short, you know, our original intention was actually to go to construction late in 2018, but it just didn't happen. 1718, the storm season wasn't bad, the roadway survived, but this year, as you know, we had some pretty major storms, and so Penrun Road sustained some damage. And just a couple of, being an engineer, I geek out on these types of photos, but just a couple of quick pictures of the damage. What you're looking at with this is inside the culvert right after the 2017 storms. If you just imagine in your mind's eye a perfectly, you know, oblong culvert, all looking like the steel, that's what we would expect to see in a normal situation, but it's rusted out, debris, water flowing through, and debris catching, which further made the deterioration worse. In 2019, as I mentioned, we had some pretty big storms. We started seeing some symptoms of the roadway subsiding. Down in the lower left-hand corner, you could see some cracks. And if you look kind of along the yellow stripe, you can see some bumps, so it started to get worse. So we installed plates to kind of smooth it out and keep the road open for the public. Ultimately, these pictures too of the damage, you can see underneath the steel plates, the road ended up settling a few more inches. We installed stop signs to slow people down and just to minimize impact on the culvert, which we believed was making it worse. And the other thing too is, you mentioned, you know, you have the kind of egg-shaped culvert. The upper left is actually the bottom part of the culvert buckling, kind of like in a heart shape. It's not supposed to look like that. Water flowing through it, if you kind of imagine like a soda can crushing, that's what's happening. Safe for traffic, but obviously, an important issue we need to address. So moving forward, the proposed project is to construct a new concrete bridge. We have all of our regulatory permits from Regional Water Quality Control Board, Fish and Wildlife, and the Army Corps of Engineers. You need those three permits to get your Central Valley Flood Protection Board permit. So after we got those, basically submitted the permit and begged them to work quickly, which we're on the May agenda. We've worked all of our issues with their staff. So our schedule, if you approve the actions today that we're requesting, would be to advertise soon after the meeting, award a construction contract late June, early July, and start construction in July with the idea of completing, or the goal of completing construction in October. Penrun Road would be closed from July to October with traffic routed on Boynton and King Road. And then this project also is funded with a combination of the Dry Creek, primarily with the Dry Creek CSA fee program, as well as the Penrun Horseshoe Bar Newcastle traffic mitigation fees. We're actually going to build wider shoulders for bikes. So that's included as well. So this last picture is just the before and after, what we prepared for some of the property owners and right-of-way negotiations. It's not the Golden Gate Bridge, but it's a project that just gives you an idea of what it's going to look like. We're trying to save oak trees too on the right-hand side, so we're putting a retaining wall in, but like I said, just to give you an idea of what the proposed project would look like. So with that, just be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I don't have any questions, I just want to thank Public Works and their road crew for all the hard work they did to keep that road open. I know they were out there in the rain and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your fast moving forward with all the permits. I know it's a challenge for you, so I'm really excited that we're going to get this corrected, so thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Holmes, yeah.
All right, any of the board members, any comments or questions? Any members of the public? I will admit that I enjoyed driving on the new surface for a while, and then one night I'm driving along, and I thought, what a stupid spot for a stop sign.
I know.
Thinking, is that to let the fish go by? Is that why we have a stop sign?
Hopefully not.
That explained, I kind of figured out why it was.
Yeah.
All right, so we have three separate actions. The first is to go ahead and authorize the advertising for the construction bids. Motion Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, aye? Aye. Second is to authorize Director of Public Works or designee to go ahead and award and execute a construction contract not to exceed $237, or, excuse me, $2370,000. Of course, having to be reviewed by risk management county council, and executing necessary change orders, maximum aggregate $131,000. Motion on that one? Motion Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Finally, we're going to authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to award professional services agreement for construction management services associated with all this work in an amount not to exceed $350,000, again, with risk management county council review. Motion Holmes, second, Wigan, all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, none, thanks, we're done with you. Moving on, forest restoration, Brett Story?
Yes, sir, Honorable Chairman and Board.
It says five minutes next to it, I'll believe that one.
Yes, Brett Story, Department of Public Works. Thank you for hearing me and. Thank you for, uh, hearing me, and, uh, a lot of good stuff today. I'm here to present a little bit about the French Meadows Project, um, and I wanted to give a little background, uh, some, we have new board members, but we have, board members have been here a while, and your leadership has led us to this point. Uh, we've had a lot of increasing fires in the last two decades, about 15 years ago, your board started down this path of trying to get more wildfire, uh, reduction and more projects in the forest, so in 2011, we signed a master stewardship agreement with the Lake Tahoe Basin, done some projects there. We've also done some with the Tahoe National Forest, um, and then in 2018, last year, your board approved another master stewardship agreement with the Tahoe National Forest to, 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 to get projects done. Um, and then, um, uh, last year, you, and this is the vernacular of the Forest Service, that's why I'm going through this, last year, you approved a supplemental project agreement to the master stewardship agreement with the Tahoe National Forest, and that also came with nearly $2 million, um, from the Forest Service to help fund the project. And what you see there, obviously, is a picture of Placer County, the red circle is where I'm headed to the project itself. Uh, the next picture is, is, it's in our Middle Fork American River Watershed, the red circle is around the acreage that we're going to be performing this, and as you know, we have the Middle Fork Project, hydroelectric project that we work with Placer County Water Agency throughout that region. Um, the project itself, 22,000 acres of public land at the very top of our watershed, the partnership, which has a number of partners I won't go into today, but the U.S. Forest Service being a main one, as well as Placer County Water Agency, um, we actually performed the environmental work, and we did it in basically half the time and half the dollars, not because they couldn't, because they were off doing other projects, but they, they endeared the trust of our partnership, and we were able to focus on it and get it done and get it, get ready to go, and so we're at that point. Um, there's approximately 10 million board feet of timber that will be removed and taken to, uh, Sierra Pacific Industries, they've, and I'll talk about that the next time I'm up here. Um, there's about 30,000 bone-dry tons of biomass that'll be removed and taken for use in energy rather than burned in the open. Um, it's, the project itself is about four years of on-the-ground mechanical handwork through that same master stewardship agreement where we will be hiring the contractors. Um, there's about eight to 10 years of prescribed fire, which the Forest Service will accomplish, not the county, um, that goes along with that after we've thinned it. Um, there's, there's multiple tons of criteria area pollutants and GHG benefits, um, because of that avoided fire and use of biomass, and it supports another around 10,000 acres of private checkerboard land that is, are, either already started or about to start, so what we're trying to do is gain a, a larger area at the top of the watershed that would be somewhat fire safe. That's the project, what we're here today is that master stewardship agreement, supplemental project agreement, modification number one, again, the vernacular of the Forest Service. And what this does, it, it allows the, uh, with the, the decision when the environmental work was approved late last year by the Forest Service, um, the operations have been in planning for a while, but specifically for this year, we've got detailed plans. This SPA modification was developed in support of that environmental work and our operations to allow Placer County to implement the necessary work, i.e., hire the contractors and monitor their performance and, and make sure everything goes as, as planned. Um, I will bring you those contracts in a couple of weeks, but for now, um, this is what we're, we're, it gives us the authority, the funding isn't in place, I'll go into more detail about that at our next meeting when I, when I ask you to, to allow me to spend the money. Um, the contractor procurement is near completion, we have the bids in, I have a meeting with Brett Wood, if he gets done after me, we're going to meet and discuss that and figure out how all that goes for your next board meeting. And we, uh, we expect to begin operations in June of this year, so coming right up. Uh, it's supposed to snow tomorrow up there again, I don't get it, we have enough water, let's, let's move on, hopefully it'll rain and wash the rest of the snow out. But what we're, uh, what I'm before your board today is to request approval to allow the chairman to execute this SPA modification number one. Um, I will take any questions, I also have the ranger of the American River, uh, Ranger District here that would like to say a few words, but I'll take any questions you might have, or I, I know you guys just did this in DC.
Any questions, Brett, before we hear from Ranger? Nope, I don't see any.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me here today. My name is Michael Woodbridge, and I'm the District Ranger on the American River Ranger District for the Tahoe National Forest out of Forest Hill. And I'm, uh, happy to be able to speak to you today, uh, been here in my position for a little over a year now, also happy to, uh, welcome Supervisor Gustafson, looking forward to working with you. Um, I'm here because I want to express my support and appreciation for the French Meadows Partnership Project and for the relationship we've built between Placer County and the U.S. Forest Service. As you know, the French Meadows Project is, uh, meant to increase forest health and resiliency and reduce the risk of high severity wildfire for more than 28,000 acres in the Middle Fork of the American River in the headwaters. And, uh, the work will be accomplished through many ways that Brett talked about, forest thinning, uh, mastication, reforestation, and prescribed burning. The French Meadows Partners, of which the Forest Service is a part, uh, includes Placer County, PCWA, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, the Nature Conservancy, American River Conservancy, and UC Merced's Sierra Nevada Research Institute. I have to say that I'm continually impressed by the passion, dedication, and know-how of these partners. On the Tahoe National Forest, we're working hard to restore healthy, resilient forests with vegetation projects and prescribed fire operations across our 850,000-plus acres, spanning five counties. However, it's a monumental task, and we cannot do it alone. With you and the other French Meadows Partners, together, we're accomplishing landscape-scale restoration that will reverberate throughout the Middle Fork Watershed. A key part of the relationship we enjoy with Placer County is the master stewardship agreement, as Brett mentioned, the MSA, which allows for SPA's supplemental project agreements. And, um, MSAs, SPAs, MOUs, there are many acronyms that we use in our work, but really, they just mean one thing, that's that we're working together. So all of us share a stake in this critical project with shared responsibility, shared implementation, and shared funding. This is the only way we can truly achieve the goal of forest health and wildfire resiliency for our shared future here in Placer County, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the ranger? Don't see any right now. All right, uh, any members of the public want to address one on this item? Seeing none, let's pleasure the board on executing modification number one to the supplemental project agreement. Motion Gustafson, second Wygant, all in favor, please say aye? Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. And, mm, moving on, we got a Speedboat Beach project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Andy Fisher and Ted Rel with your County Parks Division, here to talk about Speedboat Beach, uh, contract this, uh, this afternoon.
You're announcing a baseball game, or you're talking about a, a project? I can't believe how loud you are.
I'm sorry.
Now batting?
We're trying to be fast.
Yeah. Can't believe how loud it is.
We, all right.
It's wind up and the pitch.
I have a recommendation. So in early 2015 and 16, in 2015, early 2016, uh, Placer County went through a master planning process in the Speedboat Beach and, and neighboring Brockway neighborhood to address, uh, heavy use during the drought when there was a large beach area there, uh, to address things like, uh, parking and circulation, uh, signage, beach rules, and facilities. We had three public workshops at the Advent Center up in, uh, North Tahoe, and several walks through the neighborhood with the, uh, with the locals there that live in the Brockway neighborhood. Many of you will remember that, because the board members who were on the board at the time participated in those, that engagement with the neighbors, walking through the neighborhood. What began as kind of a contentious effort through the neighborhood, uh, their concerns about the, the overuse and things going on really concluded well. Um, the parking and circulation was addressed in 2016, the neighbors were so pleased, they had a, a barbecue for some of the staff that worked on that, so we were really pleased that we were able to do that. Now this item before you authorizes a construction contract to address the facilities up at, uh, Speedboat Beach, that part of the planning process, and I would like to turn that over to Ted Rel to talk about the, uh, the facilities, the bid process, and our recommendation to complete the funding package to move that part of this process ahead.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Fisher is a hard act to follow, so please bear with me. Uh, it's our pleasure to be here today to recommend approval of the award of contract to HA Construction of Fair Oaks, California, for the construction of Speedboat Beach Stair Replacement and Restroom Project. Additionally, we are recommending the approval to appropriate $230,000 in park dedication fees from Recreation Area Number One and a budget revision to our capital projects account to complete this project. Speedboat Beach is located in the North Lake Tahoe area at the base of the Brockway Vista Neighborhood of Kings Beach and adjacent to the Nevada State Line. Placer County maintains a 40-foot wide easement extension of Harbor Avenue down to the low waterline of Lake Tahoe, which provides public access to the beach via a pathway of wooden stairs down to the beach. This project intends to replace those stairs with the addition of a permanent restroom structure to replace portable ones that are provided seasonally, and this project will also include several interpretive panels, uh, that are going to be set alongside the easement corridor, as well as wayfinding and regulatory signage. As Andy was mentioning, in 2015 and 16, we embarked on an extensive public outreach campaign that helped forge the design process with public input, which after numerous presentations and discussion with the community, we came to your board in 2018 for approval of the plans and specifications for these improvements. Your board gave its approval, however, unfortunately, we did not receive any bids at that time. As most are aware, the construction season in the Tahoe region is short and unpredictable, so we retracted our efforts for the 2018 season and decided to rebid the project earlier in the next year so we could afford any potential bidders to have ample time to plan and build this project during the 2019 construction season. With support from our procurement services, a rebid was released for the project on March 11th, and we received three bids, with the one before you coming in from the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, albeit higher than our original engineer's estimate, which is why we are requesting the approval of additional park dedication fees to complete this project. With that, we're happy to answer any questions from the board.
Board members, have any questions? I don't see any. Members of the public? I don't see any. So, uh, three separate items? You're a load of fun. All right, we'll start by approving the award of contract 001005 to the lowest responsive, uh, responsive and responsible bidder, HA Construction, for Construction's Speedboat Beach Stair Replacement Restaurant Project, the amount of 560,000, authorizing Director of Public Works or designee to execute said contract and change orders at the $53,000 upon review of County Council and Risk Management. That's where somebody says, I'm of approval. Thank you, that's helpful, if we actually want to get this done. All right, we have a motion, Gore, second Gustafson, all in favor, please say aye? Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. We are being asked to approve the use of additional $230,000 in park dedication fees from Recreation Area Number One, North Tahoe and Martins Valley area to complete the funding for the project. Motion Gore, second Gustafson, all in favor, please say aye? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. And finally, being asked to approve a budget revision appropriating the $230,000 to the capital projects account, Speedboat Beach Master Plan, project number PJ00064. Motion Gore, second Gustafson, roll call please.
Gore?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll call that a score.
Yes, you should. Uh, we're going to skip over to item number 15, we're being asked to approve some minutes of, uh, previous board meetings, let's pleasure the board.
I need to abstain from these, I was not at the, was not up here in those meetings.
Only approval of the minutes as indicated on the board.
All right. Motion Gore, second Wygant, all in favor, please say aye? Aye, opposed, none, abstention?
One.
Thank you. And now, County Council will take us to a closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider three items of existing litigation and one item of conference with real property negotiators.
Okay, we'll be back. You, you let me know when you're ready, and we'll roll. All right, we have returned from closed session, I'm going to hand it off to County Council to report out.
The board met in closed session to consider three items of existing litigation. On all three, the board gave direction. On the Conference for Real Property Negotiations, the board heard a report and gave direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, having completed all other items before the board, we are adjourned to our next meeting, May 28th, we're right back here. Thank you all very much.